Blue Economy is an environmental economic construct that seeks to maximize the potential for economic growth from the marine space. Blue Economy is an environmental economic construct that seeks to maximize the potential for economic growth from the marine space. It seeks to harmonize the activities within the marine space. It seeks to harmonize the activities within the marine space. There are several overlapping organizations, ministries, entities that operate within that blue space. There are several overlapping organizations, ministries, entities that operate within that blue space. And almost all of the time, it's operated in a fragmented manner. And almost all of the time, it's operated in a fragmented manner. The Port Authority does their bit, the Coast Guard does their bit, fisheries. The Port Authority does their bit, the Coast Guard does their bit, fisheries. So what the Blue Economy constructs seeks to do is to ensure that everything that is happening in that blue space is harmonized So what the Blue Economy constructs seeks to do is to ensure that everything that is happening in that blue space is harmonized and everybody knows what the other organization is doing. and everybody knows what the other organization is doing. Because one thing that we learn is that a fragmented approach to any kind of economic development is not the wisest. Because one thing that we learn is that a fragmented approach to any kind of economic development is not the wisest. It almost always leads to failure because you have competing interests. It almost always leads to failure because you have competing interests. So when all the interests are aligned, it gives us a better growth perspective, it gives us better results. So when all the interests are aligned, it gives us a better growth perspective, it gives us better results. It always leads to better management. It always leads to better management. So what we look to do in that Blue Economy construct is to ensure that what happened in that marine space is well coordinated. So what we look to do in that Blue Economy construct is to ensure that what happened in that marine space is well coordinated. And one of the other aspects of the Blue Economy is to ensure that we have maximum economic gains from that blue space. And one of the other aspects of the Blue Economy is to ensure that we have maximum economic gains from that blue space. And when we say maximum, it does not mean that we are doing it in an unsustainable way. And when we say maximum, it does not mean that we are doing it in an unsustainable way. It is done in a sustainable way to look at future generations. It is done in a sustainable way to look at future generations. There are areas for expansion and growth in several sectors in our economy, in our blue economy. There are areas for expansion and growth in several sectors in our economy, in our blue economy. We'll start with fisheries. We'll start with, say, fisheries. Now, what we aim to look at right now is to look at the data for the past couple of years and develop a growth plan. Now, what we aim to look at right now is to look at the data for the past couple of years and develop a growth plan. Now, in the past, the entities, some of the government entities, like the fisheries in particular, Now, in the past, the entities, some of the government entities, like the fisheries in particular, they more or less provide a service to the fisher folk, ensure that they are licensed, they are inspected, processing concessions and so on. they more or less provide a service to the fisher folk, ensure that they are licensed, they are inspected, processing concessions and so on. But we have never had a really economic outlook, a growth plan. But we have never had a really economic outlook, a growth plan. So we aim to develop a growth plan for the fishing industry to say, okay, we want to raise our catch, our production by 20% over the next five years So we aim to develop a growth plan for the fishing industry to say, okay, we want to raise our catch, our production by 20% over the next five years and what it would take for us to get to that growth plan or that projection that we are looking at. and what it would take for us to get to that growth plan or that projection that we are looking at. There, within the fisheries and within the fisheries sector and the blue economy, there is something, there is aquaculture, There, within the fisheries and within the fisheries sector and the blue economy, there is something, there is aquaculture, which is negligible in Grenada. which is negligible in Grenada. You have some mariculture, you have some seamount farming in Grenada on the east coast. You have some mariculture, you have some seamount farming in Grenada on the east coast. But aquaculture can provide additional jobs, it can provide... But aquaculture can provide additional jobs, it can provide... One of the challenges that the tuna longliners face is the challenge of getting a reliable source of bait. One of the challenges that the tuna longliners face is the challenge of getting a reliable source of bait. Sometimes you see the guys on the carnage and the only reason they are there is because they don't have bait. Sometimes you see the guys on the carnage and the only reason they are there is because they don't have bait. Now, they rely on the jacks, the local scads that the seine would catch on the coast, mostly on the west coast of Grenada. Now, they rely on the jacks, the local scads that the seine would catch on the coast, mostly on the west coast of Grenada. Now, this is something that is done by chance, right? Now, this is something that is done by chance, right? The fisher folk who use the seine would go out by the bays early in the morning to catch The fisher folk who use the seine would go out by the bays early in the morning to catch and if it doesn't come, it doesn't come. and if it doesn't come, it doesn't come. So they have, everybody depends on that. So they have, everybody depends on that. They depend on it for our livelihood, the tuna longliners depend on it as well. They depend on it for our livelihood, the tuna longliners depend on it as well. So what we're looking at is things like fish farming. So what we're looking at is things like fish farming. If you have a fish farming, it's not nothing new, it would be new to us, but it's well established in other regions. If you have a fish farming, it's not nothing new, it would be new to us, but it's well established in other regions. We have other countries that are leading the way. We have other countries that are leading the way. The Norwegian government are big on fish farming, China, a lot of Southeast Asian countries are big. The Norwegian government are big on fish farming, China, a lot of Southeast Asian countries are big. So this is just one area that you can see additional growth, you have additional job opportunities, So this is just one area that you can see additional growth, you have additional job opportunities, you have for the folks working on the fish farm, you have the scientists, the feed production and so on. you have for the folks working on the fish farm, you have the scientists, the feed production and so on. And the spill-off effect from aquaculture can be great, can be significant. And the spill-off effect from aquaculture can be great, can be significant. There are several challenges as it relates to expanding the blue economy. There are several challenges as it relates to expanding the blue economy. Now, one of the things that is critical for us is maritime security. Now, one of the things that is critical for us is maritime security. You need constant surveillance. You need constant surveillance. And it's not just for our blue economy activities, but national security in a whole. And it's not just for our blue economy activities, but national security in a whole. It's not just a challenge for Grenada, all of the OCS islands are faced with the same challenge of not enough surveillance vessels, It's not just a challenge for Grenada, all of the OCS islands are faced with the same challenge of not enough surveillance vessels, not enough patrol vessels. not enough patrol vessels. So the challenge is not just only that too, but you have competing interests as well So the challenge is not just only that too, but you have competing interests as well within just the coastal zone activities for tourism, fishing. within just the coastal zone activities for tourism, fishing. And we have a very small coastline and some of the ecosystems where these activities happen. And we have a very small coastline and some of the ecosystems where these activities happen. So for instance, you have our marine protected areas in Bouches-Jou, Marlinet. So for instance, you have our marine protected areas in Bouches-Jou, Marlinet. It's fishermen use there, the locals use there and the tourists use there. It's fishermen use there, the locals use there and the tourists use there. So it is important that we have that sort of coastal zone management in place So it is important that we have that sort of coastal zone management in place to alleviate some of the potential challenges that we would have in this area. to alleviate some of the potential challenges that we would have in this area. And that's just the local. And that's just the local. Now, you have other challenges. Now, you have other challenges. The tuna fishery, the species that the guys on the carnage and go off and so on target, the tuna and the tuna-like species, The tuna fishery, the species that the guys on the carnage and go off and so on target, the tuna and the tuna-like species, these are described as highly migratory and straddling stocks. these are described as highly migratory and straddling stocks. So these fish swim the entire Atlantic Ocean. So these fish swim the entire Atlantic Ocean. So the management of that cannot be done by one country. So the management of that cannot be done by one country. So it comes back to our multilateral agreements and so on to help manage those stocks. So it comes back to our multilateral agreements and so on to help manage those stocks. So it is important that the view in public understand that these things are important So it is important that the view in public understand that these things are important because you might hear, for instance, Grenada is ratifying a treaty and so on. because you might hear, for instance, Grenada is ratifying a treaty and so on. To look at the high seas, you might ask, why are we doing that? To look at the high seas, you might ask, why are we doing that? But what we depend on for our livelihood as it relates to fishing, that fish swim the entire Atlantic Ocean. But what we depend on for our livelihood as it relates to fishing, that fish swim the entire Atlantic Ocean. So it needs to be managed properly for our livelihood. So it needs to be managed properly for our livelihood. So myself and others who participate in the negotiations and so on, we are not just representing Grenada, So myself and others who participate in the negotiations and so on, we are not just representing Grenada, we are looking out for the fisher folk. we are looking out for the fisher folk.
Like on a regional front? Like on a regional front?
It's a regional front. It's a regional front. And what we tend to do is to have a CARICOM position or OCS position And what we tend to do is to have a CARICOM position or OCS position so that we go as a unit or as a block to deal with some of the challenges. so that we go as a unit or as a block to deal with some of the challenges. What we are trying to do is to maximize the economic activity within that blue space. What we are trying to do is to maximize the economic activity within that blue space. So that's why it is important that we harmonize and the creation of this ministry is very important and integral in making, So that's why it is important that we harmonize and the creation of this ministry is very important and integral in making, ensuring that that happens. ensuring that that happens. Because if you have a streamlined process and everybody knows what everybody is doing Because if you have a streamlined process and everybody knows what everybody is doing and you have a collective movement, then you, because it's linked, and you have a collective movement, then you, because it's linked, whether it's Port Authority or fisheries, it is linked somehow. whether it's Port Authority or fisheries, it is linked somehow. Not just because they're operating in that blue space, but it is linked with the activities that they are doing. Not just because they're operating in that blue space, but it is linked with the activities that they are doing.
Good evening, everyone. We will begin in three minutes. So those on the outside, if you can...
So those on the outside, if you can...
We have a concrete frame where you have pillars or columns going right up to the ceiling of the building. And also, we have a parquet roof in that structure also. In that case, we solve the problem of increasing the resilience of the building and also giving folks a hurricane resilient roof. And we are, we also going to have implemented build back better rainwater harvesting. We are going to have included natural lighting and so, so you can decrease all the energy costs. And it's, the project is really aimed at assisting people who lost their housing and so during burial. So this project is a project that was developed from, by MIT. And the idea is that as government, we supposed to be leaning from the front and going forward. This is what, this is the model we want to adopt. So that when we give someone a house to live in, we are giving us something proper, something that can withstand a category three, four, five hurricane. And something that is, that is, that is built for the future.
Thank you to the government of Grenada and to the Minister of Implementation for allowing me this beautiful home for my small family and I. I truly appreciate it and I tell you, we will surely take good care of it. Once again, I say thank you.
I express my deep appreciation and gratitude for this gesture. I thank you as Minister, your team, the donors, and especially the government. In addition, the contractor and his workers and his team who worked beyond the normal during the rain, excessive rains and sun conditions, they were able to bring this building to fruition. I'm extremely grateful and will always be.
You can see by our actions that we care and that we're not leaving anyone behind. I understand if you, if, if the assistance ain't come to you yet, you feel a bit anxious. But just rest assured that we will leave no one behind. And in nine months, I think we have done quite well.
Ladies and gentlemen... Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening. And before we begin our proceedings, we'd like to invite a member of the community, Ms. Judy Lewis, to open us in prayer.
Good evening, everyone. Heavenly Father, we want to praise and thank you for gathering. It's one of us today. Praise and thank you for the full day. For you serve two or three are gathered in our midst, you are there. We ask you to send food to our Holy Spirit in this building, that whatsoever we do and say will be done to the glory and honor of your name. We pray that each person here will be able to give a good account of themselves. We also pray for the Prime Minister, who is not around. We pray for all other ministers who are here and those who are on the way. We also put Grenada in your hands and whatsoever we do will be done to your honor and glory. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. I'd like to invite you to stand as we invite a nine-year-old superstar. She goes by the name Gabrielle Peters Woodroof. She'll be singing the National Anthem for us. So please stand and let's pay homage, pay homage to our beautiful island, Grenada.
Hail Grenada, land of ours, we pledge ourselves to thee. Heads, hearts, and hands in unity to reach our destiny. Ever conscious of God, being proud of our heritage. May we with faith and courage aspire, build advance. As one people, one family, God bless our nation.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Gabrielle is our superstar, our newest superstar. She's only nine years old. And I want to thank her parents for, for always encouraging her. And she's so willing. I just said, hey, would you like to sing the National Anthem? And she was in, she, she didn't deny, she just ran up to the mic and she said, yes, she'll do it. So thank you, Gabrielle. Let's give us, let's give her a round of applause for being so talented and so willing to sing the National Anthem. And if you, if you have not heard her before this, you've been missing out. Thank you, Gabrielle, and thank you, Ms. Judy Lewis, for the opening prayer. The Honorable Andy Williams, Acting Prime Minister and Minister for Mobilization, Implementation and Transformation. Honorable Corinne James, MP for St. Jo, for St. John and Minister for Climate Resilience, the Environment and Renewable Energy. Other members of the Cabinet of Grenada, Permanent Secretaries and other government officials. Residents of the beautiful, unsleepable, unstoppable town of St. John, Guav. Good evening, everyone. All right, I want to say good evening to all of you joining us in person. And of course, we want to say good evening to those of you joining us online at home and in the diaspora. My name is Neela Atien, Press Secretary in the Office of the Prime Minister. And I'm pleased to take you through this evening's meeting. In 2025, our government will focus on Vision 75. And Vision 75 is our commitment to a brighter, a stronger and a more sustainable Grenada. And this is a declaration that as a people, we will take full control of our destiny, address the challenges of today and seize every opportunity of tomorrow. This vision is built on five transformative pillars. Agriculture and food security, housing, renewable energy, health and wellness and education with an emphasis on skills training. But this vision cannot be achieved by government alone. We need every citizen to get on board, every community to get on board and to play their role. And this is one of the main reasons why we have these community engagements. So I want to thank you for coming out this evening in your numbers. And for those of you joining us online, I want to say thank you once again. Now, before we have our ministers or all female cast of ministers present this evening on the achievements for the first quarter of 2025, I'd like to invite the Chairman of one of our technical working groups, Mr. Christopher Dirigs. He's the Chairman of the MNIB Working Group. I want to welcome him at this time to present to you the model, the new model for MNIB. And he will also introduce his team. Mr. Dirigs, welcome.
A pleasant good evening to all assembled here this evening. And I want to specially recognize the Acting Prime Minister, Honorable Andy Williams, and the other Cabinet Ministers who are present and especially invited guests. And of course, you, the citizens of Grenada, mostly I expect from the Paris of St. John's, who are here to receive information and to share your views regarding the development of Grenada. Before proceeding into my presentation, I would like to, as the chairperson indicated, introduce the members of the Technical Working Group. So they are sitting at the table to my right, to your left at the front. So we have Ms. Rachel Peters, right? We have Senator Salim Rahaman. And Ms. Isabel Morris, where's Isabel? She's coming down the aisles now. We need her here because she's going to do the clicking, right? And Ms. Morris is also a very vibrant member of the staff of the Ministry of Mobilization. There is a member of the Technical Working Group or the Project Implementation Team, as we call it, who is not present here today. And that's Mrs. Kita Shaitan Sylvester, who is unavoidably absent. And I hope she's able to follow online. Ladies and gentlemen, the presentation this afternoon or this evening will look at the Marketing and National Import Board. We are going to track its history. And we are going to look at the model that has been put forward to replace MNIB. The presentation will entail covering a number of topics. It will look at, maybe you can see the, just the table of contents, Isabel, yes? We look at MNIB, the background and legacy, the need for change, the consultation process, the vision which led to the creation of the replacement agribusiness entity, which we call Emexa, Import-Export-Agromarts, the PPP business model itself, the proposed governance structure, issues pertaining to risk management, some points with regard to the implementation timetable for setting up Emexa and the next steps. So that represents... So that represents the area, the ground that we'll cover in the next few minutes. But let me begin by beginning at the beginning. You see, what is MNIB? MNIB was set up as a state trading corporation in 1979. As we can see, it represented an amendment to the 1973 Act itself. And what was Marketing Board became Marketing and National Import Board. Those of us who are history buffs will trace the origin of market support institutions in Grenada since before the 1950s. So there is a long tradition, but it was developed and intensified in the 1970s and subsequently. With regard to what we call the founding purpose, the following: buy and sell specified produce, improve processing and marketing of produce for producers' benefits, seek out favorable arrangements for handling local produce, assist agricultural and fishing cooperatives. And the institution was vested with a legal monopoly to import and distribute some specified commodities, which includes sugar, rice in bulk as well as milk, cream milk. With regard to the legacy and experience, so the experience and legacy of the MNIB, we know that MNIB became a household name in Grenada. And it served as a key institution for agriculture, for the agricultural sector. And in its years of operation, in its best years, met many of its core objectives. I wish to say that MNIB commenced with great hope. In its best moments, it met a number of these objectives as defined in the Act. But as the years went by, there emerged a gap between expectation and delivery and to the point where it reached crisis proportions. There were challenges and there were factors that could explain how MNIB reached where it arrived. The external factors, we can speak of the global market transformation in food production. In the last 50 years or so, since the establishment of MNIB, the food production market has changed drastically. So we can speak of breakthroughs in irrigation, breakthroughs in vertical farming, the use of drones in agriculture at this point in time and so on. And all this happened as part of the external environment to the operations of an MNIB. I also wish to identify natural disasters and man-made disasters. I suppose the most salient man-made disaster in recent time would be the war, the Ukraine war, Ukraine-Russia war, which has put a shock on the supply of grains globally and has driven up the price of food. But also, climate change has been a factor. And we know that it can be empirically established that the globe is warming successively in a significant way every year. Other factors include pest disease predationary, the increased price of agricultural inputs, and importantly also, demographic shifts in farming, in the farming population. It's a fact that the majority of farmers in Grenada are above the age of 60 years. This has very serious implications for the sustainability of agriculture. But it should also be pointed out that the actual acreage under cultivation has decreased significantly in recent decades. And the most significant decrease has been happening in the parish of St. Andrews, which is the breadbasket of Grenada. I can also identify internal governance issues which affected the operation of MNIB. The first point is the point of inconsistent board composition. The MNIB being a state corporation is a creature of government. And the composition of the Board of Directors is in the hands, has been in the hands of the minister in cabinet, whoever that minister is, whether it is a Minister of Agriculture, Minister of Finance. It is a fact also that the skill sets that have been placed at the boards have not necessarily represented the best combination of skills to run a forward-looking visionary corporation. There also have been questionable management decisions that have been made, investment decisions. One feature of the MNIB has been its inability to follow through with strategic planning decisions. So if you look, if you track the history of the operation of MNIB and its governance operations, you'll see that from time to time, there has been strategic reviews, strategic planning exercises. But you cannot find a throughput, a line of consistency between the decisions and declarations and the actual actions that followed in a consistent way. And of course, of notable importance is the inability to honor commitment to farmers. There was a time in the existence of the corporation when contract farming was a feature of its operation. This fell true. Inability of the corporation to maintain its commitment with regard to volumes and prices for these agricultural, for agricultural supply, which in a sense would have led to a crisis in confidence, a loss of confidence. And farmers diverted their attention to other buyers, bypassing MNIB and moving directly to the hotels and supermarkets. And that's a fact. When one looks at the last 17 years or the 17 years leading up to 2022, which is where, you know, we brought our analysis, you know? In that 17 years, when you look at the financial performance of the corporation, there are a number of things that stand out. The deteriorating financial position, repeated operating losses over the 17 years period, and accumulated debt exceeding $17 million, which the government has taken on so that the MNIB is no longer encumbered by that debt of $17 million. And in that period also, shareholder equity decreased from 9.3 million to 0.8 million. So the actual assets, the value of the company deteriorated within the period. And the market share declined. What used to be 40% of the fresh fruit, fresh produce and vegetable markets declined to within the vicinity of 20%. So MNIB as an institution has lost credibility and has lost market. We had a consultant. In fact, we had two consultants in our work as a technical working group, and I can speak to that in a short while. And the consultant reviewed the operations of the corporation and came up with a conclusion. It's a very harsh, but maybe objectively true. The structure products and operations of the state corporation are flawed, inefficient, unfit for purpose and past expiry date in the context of the 21st century's market demands. That is, those are the exact words of the agribusiness consultant. And this agribusiness consultant is not a Grenadian, somebody who came in and looked at the situation, did not have any angle to defend and gave his best objective conclusion after studying the marketing board. Consultation process to inform governments' decisions. Some of you may recall that between the period January 10th and 14th of the year 2023, there were island-wide consultations, stakeholder consultations, and you have to regard them as national consultations. And these consultations took place in St. Andrews and St. John's in Caracoo and Pitty Martney. And the focus was on MNIB. There were hundreds, probably thousands of analytical points and recommendations. And the government was faced with a situation. How do you harvest this wealth of public comment on the corporation? How do you harvest all these recommendations in a rational way that can add value? And these consultations led to the setting up of the Technical Working Group, which I chair. These were not the only consultations because subsequent, subsequently in the year 2023, in the month of October, when the second set of, when the consultancies were hired, there were further consultations with specified groups. And I can identify the groups later on. But what was the mandate of the Technical Working Group? To establish an appropriate public-private partnership to transform the agricultural sector by addressing the following: transportation challenges, storage and preservation issues, distribution inefficiencies, export of agricultural produce. Let me say this also because you're probably wondering what is a technical working group? A technical working group consists of a group of persons who by virtue of their qualifications, experience, expertise would research and share information about a specific issue or situation, which will inform policy formulation and action. And the Technical Working Group did exactly that. We felt it necessary in order to conduct our work to enlist the help of two consultancies. The first consultancy, well, even before, let's go back a bit, Isabel. The entity that was envisaged to be created to replace MNIB would cover the following four points: would provide a viable market through contractual arrangements, would be a force in the stabilization of prices by managing supply fluctuations. And this could have been done through contract farming arrangements, where there is a stable and predictable arrangement between the agribusiness PPP and pre-qualified farmers, farmers who by virtue of their track record in production and reliability can qualify. There are on record about 6,000 farmers in Grenada. It is inconceivable that the new entity would be able to enter into contract farming with 6,000 farmers. But there are farmers who are productive and who can benefit from a scaled-up operation and who can benefit from specified extension support services, who can be part of that arrangement, which can lead to a stable, predictable supply of fresh fruit and produce for the new entity. A third capability of the new entity would be to implement integrated information systems. One of our weaknesses over the years was the lack of proper documentation. So that's we are challenged to build proper databases, the farmers, their names, their locations. And the Ministry of Agriculture has been doing a lot of that, what they are producing, the volumes of their products. But also, not just the farmers, but people who are involved in a different level, at a different level of the supply chain or the value chain in agriculture, the supermarkets, the hotels. People who are buyers and not suppliers and so on. There needs to be an integrated database, a series of database that will bring the various players together in the supply chain. And of course, such an entity can manage the value chain collaboratively. So I was about to speak about the two consultancies. The first consultancy is called the Agribusiness Consultancy. And there's a long paragraph there. But I think what's important there in that paragraph, we're looking for, from the consultant, a design for a fit-for-purpose governance framework and business model. A governance framework and a business model. But in order to do that, the consultant had to do a situational analysis of the agri-business or the fresh fruit, the fresh produce and fruits, fruits and vegetables as well as root crops in Grenada. And so it was a kind of baseline study of the situation. And the specific results we are looking for from the consultant was a review of the existing governance and business architecture. So what was the governance structure of the MNIB? I made reference to it before. It was a state-run corporation, is a state-run corporation, the Board of Directors selected by the minister and so on. And that's the construct, the governance construct. The determination of systemic structural policy and procedural recommendations for effective and efficient governance. So what are the efficiencies there and what were the recommendations of the consultant? I just want to draw your attention to the bullet points there. And these are important. The business model, the governance model, the capitalization structure, the present financial and economic analysis of the project, the roles and responsibilities of the new, within the new governance model. So that would look at the organic structure, organizational chart of the new entity. And of course, what we call the competency matrix for job roles, what people should bring who fulfill certain positions, who fill certain positions within the new corporation. But just to speak about the business model. The business model we are looking at and by the mandate given to the Technical Working Group was to create a public-private partnership. And the governance model would be found in the Act that would set it up, right? We were able to incorporate the new entity. A few weeks ago, it's called Emexa, as I said before, and according to the company's act. And so that is the framework for governance within which the new company will operate. The capitalization structure would answer the question, how is the business financed? Where's the money coming from to set up the operation? And I'll speak more about that in a short while. The market research consultant, that's also important. It was felt that apart from looking at the enabling environment, looking at the environment within which the corporation, the new entity would operate and so on, there was, we identified the need to have a more microscopic understanding of the market. there was, we identified the need to have a more microscopic understanding of the market. So what we have is two objectives. Go back up to the, yeah, market research consultant, to conduct an assessment and evaluation of marketing opportunities for fresh and value-added agricultural products with scopes of the Grenada and regional. So that's, that one deals with diversification of market, looking for markets locally as well as regionally and internationally. The second objective of the market research consultant was to undertake a strategic and technical study of the marketing of agri-value, non-food products to be utilized in health and wellness industry for export purposes, et cetera. And that has to do with the diversification of the product. So one objective is to diversify markets. And the second objective is to diversify products. And these are some of the specific results. Mapping of competitive-based opportunities. So looking, looking at the food produce sector and see which products enjoy a competitive edge or a comparative advantage in the market. What are the best bets in that regard? The low-hanging fruits, if you may. Marketing information to aid in decision-making, that's also an important factor. Opportunities for upgrading the ecosystem for agricultural marketing. The demand and supply for agri and value-added agri-products. So having a sense of the the composition of demand versus supply. I don't know if you experience that every day in the market now, but there is a disparity between demand and supply. I've spoken to hoteliers, we have spoken to hoteliers. We have spoken to people who operate supermarkets. And there is a persistent shortage of fresh produce. There is a consistent deficit. And that represents a serious problem. And that gap, there is no indication that that gap is being filled anytime soon. So such an institution can play a very important role in bridging the gap between demand and supply. If you speak to the Central Statistical Office and so on, they would show you that eighty percent of the food we consume is imported. And that's a serious problem in terms of food security consideration. And the problem is particularly serious at this point in time. And the specific result anticipated is that the new entity can be a very serious aggregator to help fill that gap. The vision, after extensive consultation and export analysis, the solution proposed was to set up a limited liability company incorporated under the Grenada Companies Act of nineteen ninety-four. Trading name, import-export agromats, IMEXA, I made reference to that, and designed to overcome MNIB's deficiencies while maintaining strategic objectives. I just spent a moment on strategic objectives. I can only open this thing. We are talking about replacing MNIB with a new agribusiness entity. I think it's important to point out that it is not contemplated or intended to depart from the strategic objectives of MNIB as it was set up in nineteen seventy-nine. It's important to point this out. So that the food security objective remains important. The provision of a predictable, stable market for agricultural produce from the farmers remains sacrosanct. The development of agro-processing remains important. The diversification of markets into exports remains important. So that when we speak of the model that is being put forward, it's not a model that attempts to just discard these important strategic objectives. It is a model that takes into consideration the founding objectives and purpose of MNIB, which unfortunately, through a series of factors which have made reference to, whether exogenous or external or within the management and operation of the entity. These factors have caused the entity to divert from its mandate in a significant enough way to warrant a policy, a shift in the model that is being contemplated. Proceed. Now, there were options offered by the consultant. And these, there are five options. And although the mandate of the consultant was to come up with a model within a PPP framework, the consultant felt it sufficiently useful to come to the technical working group and say, look, there are five models, five options really, when you look at this thing. One, you can totally shut down MNIB, which was one of the recommendations coming from these consultations around Grenada in early twenty twenty-three. There is a downside with that particular recommendation. And that is the possibility that farmers, farmers will be exposed to a situation where they have to negotiate directly with private buyers. And they may not be negotiating from a position of strength. So that is one of the potential downsides in that arrangement. Of course, another downside is that the objectives I just mentioned, the strategic objectives, are important under any consideration, whether it's option one or option five. So we cannot abandon these macroeconomic and food security considerations that informed the set number of the MNIB. You can continue operations unchanged. There are some people who genuinely and honestly, from a position of sincerity, believe that that is the way to go with that particular enterprise. The problem with that is that you'll be doubling down on a flawed, on a flawed model. It's a model that landed the corporation into seventeen million dollars debt. So for those who are saying, let us keep things the way they are and expect a different result, there's something to be said about madness. Expecting a different result and doing the same thing. Complete privatization, that's also one of the options that was laid on the table. But if you completely privatize, it might run efficiently from the perspective of the business from a private level, keeping costs below revenue and so on. But what about the government's social responsibility? And obviously, under any model, that remains important. There is a model that we looked at, you know, and it was put forward by the consultant, model four, create a market facilitator. In Trinidad, and the technical working group did a visit to Trinidad and looked at what Trinidad has in its closest relationship to a marketing board. They have what's called a market facilitator, NAMDEFCO, National Agriculture and Marketing Development Corporation. It is a branch of the Ministry of Agriculture and Fisheries in Trinidad. And they do not buy or sell. They provide market facilitation, as the name suggests. So they run farmers' markets at the wholesale and retail level. They provide information about prices. They conduct training. They do those sort of things, they identify external and local markets and so on. But they do not buy or sell. They are a facilitator. And that's a model that we found interesting. And it helps to explain the approach that we have opted for going forward. The fifth one is in fact the public-private partnership. So let's move to the next slide, please, Isabel. The PPP business model, we have described as a win-win-win collaboration, not a win-win collaboration, a win-win-win collaboration. Because it proposes to bring together the public sector, the private sector, and at some point in time, civil society, including farmers' organization. So the public sector would contribute, what is best can contribute, the enabling policy environment, infrastructural support, quality assurance, financial support, extension services. That's the public sector. The private sector's contribution, professional development, industry-specific expertise, faster decision-making, and it is known that in the private sector, decision-making goes faster. Accelerated ICT and e-commerce adoption, cash equity in this capitalization, and possibly non-traditional financing. Because there are businesses in Grenada, hotels and supermarkets that are actually involved in financing farms, that are actually involved in contractual arrangement with farmers. So that we know from experience therefore, that the private sector can help to diversify the sourcing of financing for farmers. Next slide. And of course, the farming community can play a part in the contract-based supply. And of course, in cases where they buy shares in the new company, equity participation. For now, the recommended capitalization structure, sixty percent private sector, forty percent government, farmers' organizations, NGO, civil society. In its initial setup, it is likely to be a situation where it is sixty percent private sector, forty percent government. And when this business becomes a growing concern, that is a business that is stable and capable of meeting its financial commitments, the door will be open for a more diversified ownership of equity, which would include farmers' organizations. That's the construct at this point in time. The government is mindful of how high-risk agriculture is. And in its initial setup, is not contemplating a situation where farmers are exposed to risk at that level. In this organizational structure, we are looking at four or so key departments, the fresh produce department, which is your, you know, which is happening now, right, at some level. Dry goods, dry goods would be the specified products under the legal monopoly. Agro-processing, potentially an early addition, it may not start initially. And then, of course, for administrative purposes of running a business, supporting functions of sales, accounting, HR, administration, so on. The chart before us is called a fresh produce grading chart. The thinking here is that there should be a zero-based, I'm sorry, a zero-waste policy implementation, a zero-waste operation. At present, there is a lot of wastage. The farmers will tell you that a lot of crop is wasted because there's a, all right. She says I have five minutes. Can I have ten? All right, okay. So the chart shows different levels of grading. And so grades one and two, go back to the chart, please. Grades one and two would be for export, import, local and export. Grade three, agro-processing. Grade four, animal feed. Grade five, there is no, everything is used, there is no wastage. And it's a standard-based grading system. Proceed, please. So I think it's important to point out that there are enabling factors that will possibly guarantee the success of the new entity. And there are four of them. I made reference to it already, the legal monopoly on specified commodities, which will provide a financial anchor, derisking for the investors, asset transfer from the MNIB, including the parkhouse at River Road. And these, the parkhouse and the young street property are the two main assets, right? A customized fiscal incentives package. We have received a recommendation from the GIDC for a customized fiscal incentives package for the new entity. And of course, extension services for contracted farmers. And that, the Minister of Agriculture is here and can be developed upon. There are risks involved in any business operation. And this, we have some external risks, right? Freight and oil, a big one is the Trump tariff, right? And for every risk we have identified, there is a corresponding mitigation approach. And then there are internal risks, which have to do with production challenges that the operation would face. Proceed. Implementation status quickly. Some of you might have attended the November conference, investors' conference, where the government shared its vision and invited commitments. We are in the process of developing a draft prospectus. We expect that prospectus is a document that sells, that explains the financials in particular of the new entity and so on. That prospectus is something you give to prospective investors and they would know what the likely returns would be on the investment. And so that is almost finished. We have spoken about the incorporation of IMEXA. And we have developed a criteria for assessing potential partners. It's a matrix of weighted variables that looks at what the the best possible qualities that an investor can bring to the table. We are in the process of securing legal services that will do two things. The legal service will, one, prepare a PPP agreement, which is an agreement between the government and the prospective investor. And then it's also a share purchase agreement that is being prepared. So it will identify the value of shares and what the commitments of shareholders would be and so on, which is difficult. Immediate actions. We have some work to do at MNIB level in terms of completing the MIB, the audits and so on. I mean, it's a known fact that the the financial records were not what they used to be. There was not an external audit of MNIB since twenty nineteen. That's what the new administration inherited and so on. And we are in the process of, we will submit the prospectus as prepared with a request for proposals from the specified preferred investors, those who seem to have the capability to work with us. And we expect that hopefully by the month of July, according to what the Minister of Finance said in the budget presentation, right? He did say that he expects the new entity to be up and running by July. Before that, however, we'll be onboarding the partner or partners. It does not have to be one private sector partner, it could be two and so on, the joint ventures. So I am sorry I had to accelerate my presentation that way and so on. But there's a lot of work that has gone into this. It is fifty years of running a state corporation that, you know, despite of its vaunted and highly laudable objectives, came up short. And we try to, as a project implementation team, do a kind of scientific and reasoned do a kind of, um, scientific and reasoned approach to assessing the situation and come up with recommendations. So I think this is where I, I close. And, um, we have here present with us members of the project implementation team who are quite capable of answering questions and addressing issues I didn't cover. And, um, we have also very, a very capable battery of ministers here on, 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 on the, um, platform. Another pulpit, the platform. Who can also assist in that, especially with regard to policy issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. De Riggs. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite anyone in the audience. If you have questions for Mr. De Riggs and his team, you may proceed. At this time, please remember, uh, questions pertaining to his presentation and MNIB. Um, if you have any at this time, you may, you may go ahead with questions pertaining to the way forward. So we will have, the, the team is on standby to answer all your questions. And then after your questions on MNIB, we'll take presentations from our four ladies of government. Any questions? Yes, we do have a question from the audience pertaining to MNIB. There are two mics in the, in the audience, in the middle of the audience, so you can stand and you can... Go ahead.
Um, Mr. De Riggs, I'm not sure if I missed that out. I'm sorry, my granddaughter is sleeping here.
No problem.
Alright. I'm not sure if I missed that piece out, but I saw you all had something on the screen about, um, immediate challenges. Did you address that? Did you? I don't find I heard you talk anything about that one. Could we go back to that, please?
Um, you going to pull it up?
Yes, please.
Huh? Current challenges?
Current challenges, that's it? Current, external audit that comes from acting board required for prospectus development. So that is the challenges we have currently?
Yes, it's a challenge and, um, um, we, we work in very diligently to overget around this particular challenge.
I have one concern. And my concern is, and I don't understand that, but I'm just trying hard to understand. How is it that we are planning or the government are planning to make changes with marketing board? And the person that is managing marketing board has been the accountant for all the years that have been involved in marketing board selling to them previously. Don't you think it is wise to change that person because you all moved him from accountant to manager? So you have two posts now. And the last consultation I was in there with you all in, um, Radisson, I remember part of the account that you all needed, he did not give it to you all to do the presentation. And in my opinion, if we have to move forward, we have to really get the truth about what is happening. But I don't find we getting everything clearly. So I don't know if, well, I know you cannot do anything when it comes to that. PM is not here, but our acting PM is here. And I'm sure he should, he would be able to say something, but we need to change that.
Well, you know, the, um, the terms of reference of the project implementation team did not give us the power to change the manager of marketing board.
I know.
Okay, so I think, you know...
I guess that's not your pay grade I'm calling to you.
It's above my pay grade, right?
So let, um...
So, I guess other people who are more competent to answer that question.
Yes.
Right here.
We have to change that.
Alright, thank you. Um, anyone else with a question? I'm not sure if we're, I'm not sure if this is the right forum to respond to that particular question about changing the, um, changing the, the manager. But we will, we, we, we are taking note of it.
Okay. Let's not change the manager, let's change the accountant.
We take note of that as well. Thank you. Another question? Another question on the marketing board issue? Alright, I'm hearing some mumblings at the back. Does anybody have a question at the back? Or comment? We take the comments as well. Suggestions are also welcome. There's a question? Okay. Alright, so we move on to our first Minister of Government. Thank you, Mr. De Riggs. If you think of a question, please, um, note it and we will take it later on after the presentations. So I'd now like to invite, thank you, Mr. De Riggs, and thank you to your team. I would now like to invite Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas, Minister for Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs to make a presentation. Minister.
Um, Mr. Andy Williams, Honorable Andy Williams, Acting Prime Minister, Cabinet colleagues, Cabinet Secretary, Ms. Carvettlet, I hope she's here. Permanent Secretaries, Press Secretary, Ms. Nilla Etienne, Parliamentary Secretaries, Senior Managers, Special Invited Guests, Ladies and Gentlemen, Members of the Press, Pleasant good afternoon, good evening to all. As Minister with responsibility for Gender Affairs, it gives me great pleasure to share this platform with my colleague sisters. This evening, it's all about woman power. And you will be thrilled with the information that we will share with you, giving an account of the successes over the last quarter. In other words, we are here to report to you, the people. This evening, I will share with you some of the achievements of the Ministry of Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs. This ministry is one of the most active ministries in the government of Grenada. And I will repeat. This ministry is one of the most active ministries in the government of Grenada. We deal with clients, as my PS will say, from the cradle to the grave. With wide and varied needs. The work of this ministry is not, is not very sexy. It's not about hype and excitement, but hard work, consistent commitment and stick-to-itiveness. While other workers in this country sleep in, some of our workers are up answering emergency call, transporting victims to the hospital or the police station, or taking them to the shelter and doing whatever it takes to ensure that social services that we provide are up to expectation to all concerned with the hard work of the staff who make it happen. One of the things we grapple with on a daily basis is that clients coming to us think that the problem is the most important, the most urgent and the most significant. And so we have to prioritize to try as best as possible to roll out the services and the deliverables as best we can with the staff and the resources allocated to our ministry. To be effective, we collaborate with social partners in the fulfillment of our mandate as well as develop policies and the procedures to allow us to better able to provide service on a more consistent manner. As a ministry, we believe in woman empowerment. We have a whole Ministry of Gender Affairs. We are convinced that if we create the right opportunities and favorable environment, that women will be able to take their rightful place in society, not only as users of services, but as creators. It is with this conviction that our ministry, the Ministry of Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender, Gender Affairs, work in collaboration with organizations like FAO, UN Women and Global Affairs Canada, who we collaborated with recently to successfully host the International Women's Day Economic Empowerment Forum Business Development Workshop. This gave women the opportunity to establish favorable positive networks. We believe that we should create the enabling environment for women to equally participate in the economic sector. In this regard, a two-day interactive business development workshop was delivered to fifty female entrepreneurs across Grenada. In the main, the main focus of this workshop was capacity, capacity building in entrepreneurship, financial literacy, product development and digital marketing. We also focus on empowering women with practical tools to grow and formalize their business. Strengthen linkages between support institutions and the woman-led micro, small and medium-term enterprises. Participants will be linked to mentorship and grant opportunity follow-up sessions. And monitoring is planned to ensure long-term impact. So you see, it's not very sexy, but it is deep. Women in Leadership and STEM, that is Science, Technology, Engineering and Mathematics. Within the same context of women empowerment, we successfully host the International Women's Day Leadership Event. We brought together leading women in science, technology, engineering and mathematics to create a platform for young women and girls to engage with female role models. The aim was to create greater visibility of women in non-traditional fields as a means of inspiration for our girls. It sparked mentoring connections and increased interest in expanding STEM pathways for girls in secondary and tertiary institutions. The program will continue through partnership with schools and tertiary institutions. The Ministry of Education will assist with integrating STEM career talks into the school calendar. The National Population Policy. We successfully completed the draft evidence-based National Population Policy. The aim of the policy is to guide sustainable development planning by integrating population trends into policies and program formulation. It focuses on demographics, resilience, youth empowerment, migration and aging. This framework emphasizes the importance of demographic resilience and enhancing the capacity of the population to adapt to social, economic and environmental changes while fostering linkages between set targets and our developmental outcomes. The Draft National Disability Policy and Strategic Action Plan. In collaboration with UNDP, we completed the final draft of the National Disability Policy and Strategic Action Plan. This policy is the first inclusive disability, disability policy and action plan in Grenada. This policy is the first inclusive disability policy and action plan in Grenada. I thought I didn't hear. It addresses accessibility, education, employment and social protection for persons with disabilities and provides a framework for right-based inclusive national development. Zero to six real quick. The Ministry Through the Death of the Elderly is, has implemented the Zero to Six Real Quick Program. The objective of this program is to arouse consciousness in the minds of the population concerning the importance of planning for retirement. The St. David edition of the program was conducted and sixty participants benefited from the information sharing session. We plan to roll out similar programs throughout the country. This is a very vital initiative as many of our younger citizens are not fully aware of the importance of planning for later years. We have to provide information to help individuals start looking seriously at putting systems in place for the golden years. Joining a burial society will not accelerate your death. Death, you must. And you need to start putting things in place for this reality. And this is some of the things we have to let our people know. I was chatting with a young man thirty-five years, trying to get a job for him. When I succeeded, had to submit to me his, um, banking information. And he has not a count in credit union, neither in the bank, nowhere whatsoever. So this program will take care of those kind of information to just educate and encourage people to plan and prepare. High Harrison Youth, Young Potential Excellence. The Harrison Young Potential Excellence Program is fully operational. The program is designed to address juvenile delinquency through mentorship and positive role modeling, building resilience, developing life skills and creating supportive networks for our at-risk youth. The program is currently serving twenty-five young people who are in conflict with the law, ten at the center and fifteen at the community level. Establishment of a pre-diversion unit. The Ministry of Social Development in collaboration with the Ministry of National Security is consulting on the possibility of establishing a pre-charge diversion unit. The pre-charge diversion unit is conceptualized to be housed and operated within the Royal Grenada Police Force. This unit will serve to provide an early collaborative and supportive response for children who come into conflict with the law by facilitating access to social support or pre-charge diversion programming. The overarching goal is to prevent children from entering the formal court system through timely intervention and coordinated strategies. The Seed Benefit Card. The aim of our government is to improve the social protection service delivery mechanisms. The old system leads to long line, limited, alternative options and a tedious payment process. alternative options, and a tedious payment process. We promise to introduce the SED Benefit Card. And ladies and gentlemen, we are doing just that. To date, five hundred and fifty-three beneficiaries received the card. And by the middle of this, sorry. And by September twenty-twenty-five, all beneficiaries will receive the ATM card to be able to access their funds. Currently, we have a total of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-nine beneficiaries. Two thousand one hundred and ten in St. Andrews, eight hundred and thirty-eight in St. David's, two thousand two hundred and two in St. George, six hundred and ninety-one in St. John's, St. Agirre, St. Mark, four hundred and twenty, and St. Patrick's, one thousand and sixty-eight. SED created some mama. The Burial Relief Income Support Program, BRIS. The BRIS program is managed by the Government of Grenada with support from the World Food Program. BRIS provides six months of income support to qualified beneficiary whose livelihoods were negatively impacted by Hurricane Burial. It is six months, six months of income support. The BRIS program focuses on the parishes of St. Patrick's, St. Andrews, St. John, St. Mark, Carrickou, and Pitty Martinique. The applicants were targeted at the household level, with the applicant being the main income earner of the respective households. To date, a thousand of two million six hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars has been paid, and eight hundred and sixty-nine persons have benefited so far. In the area of community development, the ministry has been placing emphasis on the following areas: refurbishment of community centers throughout the country and the installation of management teams to run the affairs of the community centers, thereby ensuring that they are used for their intended purposes. Skill development. In the area of skill development, the ministry funded and supported several skill development initiatives. This included a fashion design program at Malmont Community Center, St. David's, electrical installation program at Laughlinet School, St. Andrew Northwest, hydroponics training for seventy women at McDonald College, which is currently ongoing. Small business development. The ministry assisted in the formation and resuscitation of over one hundred small businesses throughout the country. These include businesses involving agriculture, landscaping, mechanical engineering, information technology. Community self-help projects. The ministry funded and implemented approximately one hundred small projects throughout Grenada. These included the construction of bus shelters, by roads, footpaths, slipper drain, box drain, retaining wall, toilet facilities, change room, and installation of solar forward streetlight. I must emphasize that the Ministry of Community Development introduced solar lights to the big parish. And the PS and the Community Development Minister, Officer must be commended for their foresight and forward thinking. Well, MIT followed after. The first set of lights were installed in the area of Colombe, which was a very welcome initiative as residents and passersby continue to praise that project. In the house, in the area of housing, over the last year, the ministry has constructed one hundred and seventy new houses, repaired three hundred and seventy houses, and built one hundred and sixty bathrooms and toilets. Each new house constructed included the construction of bathroom and toilet facilities. Bathroom and toilet has not stopped there. When it comes to wash, another set of bathroom and toilets. So we have fifteen of those wash toilets and bathrooms, fifteen in the telescope area under construction, Simoon Baghdad fifteen, Birch Grove seven, Subi's thirteen, Paradise, Quebeci, that's the neighborhood where I live, twenty-three. St. David's Corinth in the Coconut twelve, Berrot and Belai Plain thirty-three, and Belai thirty-eight. We continue to improve the water access and sanitation in homes across the island. We'll be heading north very soon. So residents look out for the wash team as we continue to serve the people of this nation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Minister. Somebody's waving at you. I'm not sure if they have a question or if they're saluting you. We want to take the presentations first, and then after all of these, we will ask the questions, right? So just save up all your questions, and then we're gonna ask them after all the ministers present. So we're gonna move right along. The ministers each have just about seven minutes to present. Just about seven minutes to present. And we're gonna invite Senator Claudette Joseph to present to you now. She is the Attorney General and Minister for Legal Affairs, Consumer and Labor Relations.
Thank you, Madam Mistress of Ceremonies. Acting Prime Minister, the Honorable Andy Williams from the South Side, No Mouth Side, No Pound Side. Other Cabinet colleagues, especially my sisters on the head table, and most especially my sister Karine, our gracious host this evening. Members of the MNIB Technical Working Group, members of the media, senior government officials, including permanent secretaries. I see some of you here this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, especially the wonderful people from the Republic of Guav in the parish of St. John. Ladies and gentlemen from other places, viewers online, good evening to you all. It is my pleasure and distinct delight to interact with you this evening as I join with my sister colleagues in Cabinet in providing you with an update on our respective ministries and constituencies. And I say update, but I actually prefer the term that my sister Gloria used, report. Can we work in for you? We have to report to you. So this is what we are doing this evening. I will report on progress made in the town of St. George so far, since we don't have a, we don't know what's going on, you understand, in the town. So I'm taking care of the town. According to the people, I'm the MP. And the work there, I can tell you, well, in my view, has so far been transformative. When I'm done reporting, you'll tell me if you agree with me. I will also report to you and update you on the work we have been doing at the Office of the Attorney General and the Ministry of Legal Affairs, Labor, and Consumer Affairs. I take my role as protector and caretaker for the constituency of the town of St. George very seriously. So I will report to you on that aspect first. And I'll give you a fact. I'll start with a fact. Despite having its MP sit in the Cabinet for three of the last four terms in government, the town of St. George has been largely underserved and underrepresented. That is despite the fact that its MP had a seat at the table of government in three of the last four terms. The result of this is that, among other things, the town is riddled with crumbling infrastructure, underdeveloped infrastructure, a housing crisis, neglect of sporting and community facilities, despite the fact that it is one of the more sporting and community-oriented constituencies. And this, these matters are matters that I have acknowledged in communication with the people of the town. They are very aware of it as well. And taking my role as caretaker and the voice of the people of the town in the government very seriously, I have led the undertaking of several projects and endeavors in the constituencies. I will highlight to you just a few of them because of the time constraint that we have. In the villages of Darbo, River Road, Mon Rush, in Grenville Street, and HBLA Street, we have completed or have ongoing several projects, including retaining walls, box and slipper drains, roadways, and walkways. These efforts have significantly enhanced the daily lives of people, saving them in some instances from having to jump mega rocks and traverse mud to get to and from their homes. We have fixed that in several areas and are going through the constituency methodically, village by village, cluster by cluster, as we enhance the lives of our people. We have several projects, medium to large, soon to start at Darbo, Green Street, River Road, Coco Darbo, and Woolage Road. This is one that the residents ask about a lot, about people, including people outside of the town. We have enhanced play spaces in some of our schools, including two preschools, adding swings and so to the schools for the children. We have upgraded the basketball court at River Road, which is heavily used. And we are in the process of setting up a resource and computer lab, a resource center and computer lab at the community center at River Road. And we are going to generally enhance that center. In fact, PS at the Ministry of Social Development said to me only recently that the River Road Community Center is the most-used community center in all of Grenada Carrickou and Pitty Martinique. And that was in a state of disrepair. We are fixing it. We have done the basketball court nearby. Currently, in that same space, work is ongoing at the Queens Park Playing Field, where a new structure, a pavilion, is being constructed. And beneath it will be meeting rooms, lockers, and changing facilities. Now, you know, there is a stadium right in River Road, but the stadium is not available to the community because there is a cost to use the stadium, and it's not cheap. So that playing field next to the Wesley College is where a lot of Premier League and First Division and Second Division and the schools, everybody use that playing field there. And it is in a state of disrepair. That is what we are working on, putting in the facilities for the community. And, well, because they have national matches played there as well, it is also for the entire nation. We are also lighting that playing field that is ongoing now so as to accommodate night football. Give me a hand for the people of River Road. We are also upgrading the Old Trafford Playing Field at Tantin. We had a little setback, a little technical setback. We started and had to stop, but that is going to be done soon, is gonna be resuming soon, and installing their changing rooms and lockers for the young children. All of the schoolchildren that use the Old Trafford Playing Field have been asking, and of course, our legendary cricketer Junior Murray, who does his training there with the youngsters, has asked repeatedly. And we are working together to make this happen. We care about the well-being of our children as well. So last Sunday, we commissioned a brand-new playground at Mon Rush. And you know, that one was a struggle because in 2018, recognizing the need, but not being in government, I took my good little money from my pocket and put up a swing set. And some thugs belonging to the opposition party broke it down. And so we are very happy. The community, everyone, is very happy that this playground has been installed. And Sister Gloria, I want to make one slight correction to something you just said. The installation of solar lights actually started on the Carnage. I must say, though, it was, it was supported... No, I was about to say it was supported by social development, but that was actually MIT. Ladies and gentlemen, we aimed to, we, and you know, the solar lights, it's something, it's an example of small gestures that go a long way and have big impact. You know, there's an area, yes, there's an area towards the end of River Road called Rocks, in between the housing scheme and the call. And I didn't think anything of it. You know, it wasn't even one of those things I published as having accomplished in the constituency. And a young man from the area stopped me the other day. And he said, you know, that was the best thing. This, these lights there? That's the best thing anybody has ever done for the area. Because the area was dark, dismal, and I didn't even know there were some attacks on young ladies in that area in the past because of how dark it is. So these little things have big impact, and people really appreciate them. And we are only too happy as government to be able to serve in this regard. We aim to preserve and enhance the architectural character of the town of St. George and take care of our built heritage. And that is why this government, we undertook the mammoth task of restoring historic Fort George. This magnificent work is expected to be completed before the end of this year and will significantly enhance the aesthetics of the town and create another aspect to our tourism products. And I must commend the grit and stick-to-itiveness of Minister of Mobilization, Implementation, and Transformation in making this happen. Because we inherited the project with the funds approved, but those who were in government before felt it was too big of a task to undertake because what it required is restoring the fort. using the same building methods and materials as was done between 1703 and 1710, when the fort was built. And that, brothers and sisters, is what we are doing. No small feat, if I may say so myself. We are also working as part of enhancing the built heritage of the town of redeveloping the historic area, which will encompass York House, the prairie building on Chilwell Street, which, by the way, we are in the closing stage of. The government has just purchased that historic, that heritage building so that we would have a national art gallery there. And no, Orlando Romaine does not own it, the government of Grenada. And that will also include the museum, the drill yard and the public library, which we intend to reopen as promised. In terms of the Ministry of Legal Affairs, Labour and Consumer Affairs, we have done quite a lot to improve the standard and experience of our employees. Agreed? Have we not taken care of our employees so far as a government? Like, you're all free to answer? Yes, we have done so. So having restored pension and dignity by enhancing spaces, we are now about to amend our labour code. And I am happy to report to you, the people, that we have in hand the first draft of the amended legislation. And these amendments will, among other things, extend maternity leave from 12 to 14 weeks. It will also introduce, for the first time in the English-speaking Caribbean, paternity leave. So fathers, you will also be entitled to paternity leave, to bond with your baby and to help the mothers take care of the baby in this early stages. We will, the amended, the amended labour code will bring, yes? The amended labour code will bring clarity to certain aspects. Oh, paternity? So far, two weeks. The men, the men in the Cabinet lobbying for some more, so we're trying to see what we could do, right? But so far, so far, two weeks. Because we have to collaborate with agencies such as the NIS and the private sector and so. It has, it has to be a tripartite arrangement. And by the way, I must commend the private sector. We have a very active labour advisory board. And they help with, they help to give policy advice in terms of some of the refinement we are looking for in the labour code. And the employers' federation that represents the private sector, they have been very, very good and cooperative. They have shown that just as government, they too care for their workers. So we, we look forward to greater productivity from our workers, public workers and private workers. Because as Minister for Labour, I can tell you that the private sector has been very, very cooperative with the government in our endeavors. We successfully introduced and implemented the new minimum wage, the first time in 12 years, even though the law says you must do it every three. And coming out of that, there are some improvements that we need to make and we are going to do so. So one of the things we are going to do in the amended labour code is to clarify that tips, your minimum wage, will not include tips when you work in the service sector, in the service industries. So because we find a few, not many, a few employee, employers rather, trying to top up the tips. The workers get the tips and they try to top it up so as to come up with the minimum wage. So we're gonna, we're gonna spell it out in the law that the minimum wage is exclusive of tips and commissions, yes? Tips and commissions. And... I just started telling them. So there are many more, there are lots of, you're distracting me there, you know? In terms of labour, we, we do have a shortage currently of labour, especially in the construction and the service sector and so. So one of the things I commend, just to get Cabinet approval for that, is a revamp of the work permit regime. Currently, we are exempting workers who are coming into Grenada to help with the rebuilding efforts. We have done about 60 or so workers already, exempted workers who are coming into Grenada to help rebuild Caracu, St Patrick's, all of the areas affected by Hurricane Barrel. We will find, you will find that we may have to extend that in certain areas, construction and so on. So look forward to that. And one last thing, as I'm in Guav. You know, great people come from Guav. Yeah? No doubt. We have King James, we have King Killer, we have Ethan Sam, we have Ian George, we have all these people. Well, my ministry also is responsible for CAPO, the Corporate and Intellectual Property Office. That office deals with trademarks, copyrights, companies', intellectual property rights. And today, today, working with the ministry, get this, listen carefully, the World Intellectual Property Organisation, today named as its latest Intellectual Property Ambassador, Chavon, why is he saying him again? John, Chavon John, Vaughan from St Guav, he's from Guav. No, well, I from, I read the man thing and they say it from, he's from Guav. So I will set up to come here and say, well, anyway, it's still the West Coast, still the West Coast. So, brothers and sisters, Vaughan is our, now our new international ambassador for intellectual property. I want you to put this in perspective. I want you to put this in perspective. That is as big as winning an Olympic gold because in the whole world, there are only 15 such ambassadors named by the World Intellectual Property Organisation since the year 2000, when they started with the World Youth Ambassadors for IP. They name 15 only. Vaughan is the first from the Caribbean. Whether English, Spanish, French or Dutch Caribbean, he's the first Caribbean ambassador. This is an achievement of which we are very proud. And on Friday, as we celebrate World IP Day, we will tell you more about it. We will have a press event with Vaughan and the Intellectual Property Office and tell you more about it. So I thought it would be good to end on that note. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister Senator Claude Joseph, for your presentations. And again, I encourage you to hold on to your questions. We'll take them shortly. We move right along to our Minister for Youth, Sports, Mental Health and Religious Affairs, the Honourable Delma Thomas. And I know she has lots to report, especially from our recent achievements in the Karifta Games 2025 in Trinidad and Tobago. We invite now Minister Delma Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, Acting Prime Minister, the Honourable Andy Williams, the powerhouse women in frontier as part of the platform, other Cabinet colleagues. I see, I'm seeing Sister Senator Frances and Senator Queens Britain among the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, people from the Republic of Guav, a pleasant good evening to every one of you. Good evening? No, I'm not hearing you. Good evening, everyone. What a joy it is to be here with you tonight among people who are passionate and committed to the transformation of our nation. Brothers and sisters, we are here to report to you our employers. And so, as the Parliamentary Representative of St Andrews North West, I'm expected to start reporting about the constituency. But you will agree that based on what we achieve as a nation, that I must start with our Karifta performance. I want to begin with something that still gives me goosebumps every time I think about it. Our phenomenal Karifta team. These young athletes didn't just show up, they showed out. They carried the Grenadian flags high and proud, bringing home not just medals, but a message that Grenada is a powerhouse of raw talent, determination and excellence. Their performance lit a fire in all of us and served as a powerful reminder that when our youth are supported, they can and will dominate any stage. And so we are in St John's, and so I want to highlight Mr Ethan Sam, Mr Ian George and Mr Cameron McLean. These are three athletes among the powerhouses of our Karifta team. And so, brothers and sisters, we got two golds, six silver and five bronze in the track and field. But this is not all. We had our swimmers who are still in competition, competing tonight and coming in different batches. And among our swimmers, we had two gold, six silver and five bronze. That is enough for us to give a high five and a high applaud to the young Karifta team. As a government, we recognise this potential and we're not just clapping from the sidelines. You know, sometimes you hear people saying that the government only wait for when they win to provide support. I want to say to you, brothers and sisters, that we provide support to all our federations, or mostly all of our federations. There are some federations, like the football, who get more support than the other federations. So we provide more assistance to the Grenada Athletic Association. We provide to the local Olympic Committee. We provide to football clubs. We provide to basketball and all the federations. We provide. At the end of the year, it amounts to millions of dollars. And that is why we can clap. That is why we can support. That is why we feel free to say to the people that we can celebrate our athletes. But as a government, we are prepared to do more when it comes to recognising and supporting our athletes. We know that if we want more like Kirani, Anderson, Lyndon and even those who just perform in the Karifta to be Olympians, that we have to provide the infrastructure, we have to provide the support. And so as a government, we are putting our money where our mouth is. And so we will continue to provide all the necessary support. You like, we brothers and sisters, that I want to move into the constituency and let to say to you that this government is also putting the money where the mouth is as it relates to constituency affairs. And the constituency of St Andrews North West, we get our fair share of the national pie. And so we can report just like any other constituency. So you may see many things happening in St David's and you may say as the Prime Minister, constituency, similar things are happening in the constituency of St Andrews North West. Sister Gloria reported that we have 23 toilet and bathroom under the Wash Programme in one community. That is enough to understand and appreciate that this is a government that cares for the people. This is a government that is serving the people. And we only talking about one village, but across the constituency, we have a number of other families who are receiving not only bathroom and toilet, but housing assistance. We also have solar lights in every village within the constituency. And more are being done as we speak. We have a number of infrastructural development in the constituency, by roads, retaining walls. We have playground, children playgrounds, we have in within the three schools. We have approved playgrounds for St Mary's RC, Parkly Government and St Michael's RC. These are the three primary schools in the constituency. At present, they are installing one in Moncton. There will be playground at the end of the year in every area within the constituency because there are some who already have some before. Lighting of playing fields, we are also building the infrastructure. So as the Ministry of Sports, we are doing a general thing, but within our constituency, we have Sablighted, we have Balthazar, we have Moncton, we have Merbo. And we are in the process of installing close to St Mary's RC school. And at Delphi, there will be a total upgrade that include infrastructural work there, lighting and children playground. Similarly with Molong, where there will be a children playground and upgrade of the playing field. Is that not development, brothers and sisters? Then if that's not, then I'm not sure what is. So as a government, we continue to provide all the necessary support within the constituency. Very, just recently, we relaunched an elderly soup kitchen where over 40 elderly citizens living alone get a hot meal Mondays when dizzy and Fridays. We also provide breakfast assistance to the three schools in the constituency on a regular basis. So every month or every time the things run short, the principal will report to the office and we provide them with the support. We want to thank our Prime Minister for his visionary leadership because the constituency allowance, the constituency allowance enabled us to do more than what we get from ministries. So yes, the Ministry of Education provides scholarships and tuition assistance. But there are some people who still need a little support. And so from the constituency allowance, we provide support to them. We pay directly to the school. So when you hear constituency allowance, it's not a case that we have monies that we can just give you a cheque in your name. We ask you to bring the invoices for the service provider, whether it's a brain scan, whether it's a medication, an asthma machine or some other assistance. We ask you to bring the invoices and we write the cheques to the service provider. So we do all different things. We assist schools, we assist individuals in community, we do educational assistance and all that. And so we are happy to be able to report that we continue to provide support. And apart from those development programmes in Ministry also, Sister Gloria reported that we also have programmes within the constituency that assists our young women or young men. So we continue as a constituency to provide service to the people of the constituency of St Andrews North West. And we want to thank our government for giving us that opportunity to be able to provide those assistance. Let me move on to the Ministry of Youth, Sports and Mental Health because I do not want the Chairperson to come and stand by me. Just recently, we launched the Elevator Programme. And brothers and sisters, Elevator is a programme that is different to the Imani Programme. The Elevator is not a programme that will enable our young people to be exploited. It aimed at providing training with a given timeline and immediate transition and assisting them to find jobs or we assist them with small businesses and hold their hands until they are very successful. So that's what set it apart. Brothers and sisters, I want to speak about the new Imani Programme because I know many of you would have seen that we sent home trainees and they are, you know, these are political propaganda. This government cares too much about our young people. This government put million in providing assistance for young people. You see, brothers and sisters, every time you hear that this government doesn't care about young people, what they tell you about the Imani Programme? Well, brothers and sisters, the Imani Programme spent, had its time. And so we have trainees who are in the private sector for in excess of 10 years. If you are training for 10 years, then you... If you are training for ten years, then you must get your PhD and over that. Or if you're training for five or more years, then you have to have a master's degree to show. So you can be in a private sector, government is paying you, and you receive nothing from the private sector, they're not willing to pay you, and we continue to pay. So as a government, we have decided to remove thirty-seven persons. And I'm going to give you a breakdown on that particular issue, because last year, we decided to look into the issue of trainees who are placed in private sector, ten years, eight years, seven, five, and so. And so, we started to have honest discussions with those employers to ensure, to ask them whether or not they can take these people full-time and pay them, not only pay them seven or eight hundred dollars, but pay them the minimum wage. So we started at least the minimum wage. So we started with over maybe close to two hundred trainees. And so, many of the businesses took those trainees, some took them in December. And so, by the time April, we were left with eighty-seven. Eighty-seven. And so, we gave them until April. At the end of that period, thirty-seven persons from different private sectors, so maybe one place may have two or three, decided that I cannot keep those trainees, or I cannot pay them. I could keep them, government paying them, no problem, but I would not pay them. Brothers and sisters, that is exploitation. And as a government, we will not continue. So we removed them from the site to replace them in more meaningful engagement. But while we transitioned them, we had several meetings, and we said to them, we'll continue to pay you. So you have to ignore those neighbors when they come with all that kind of stories looking for pity. If you care about the young people, they were not going to be in training program for all this period. Brothers and sisters, on Sunday coming, we will launch our youth caravan, taking government to the streets, parish by parish, school by school. So our young people know they are seen, heard, and valued, and it isn't about photo ops. As a government, we do not believe in photo ops. Yes, we take pity as, because we have to showcase our work in public life. But the truth is, our real objective is our developmental agenda for all of our people. And as the Minister of Youth, I'll say our development agenda for young people. This is about real connection, and you will agree that we have real connection when it comes to youth development. Sister Civil Francis, stand up and take a bow, let them see very youthful persons who are just, Brother Queen, see somewhere hiding. Sister Karen, you could stand and make people realize that this government is serious about youth development. We've been listening, learning, and responding. And so, our first stop, our first stop will be this Sunday in Granville, where we'll have informational booth. We will highlight those successful character athletes or character team from the big parish. So we go parish to parish, at each parish, we'll be able to say these are our character, our character team like Kristoff and the others. And I want to boast and say that Kristoff is from St. Andrew Northwest. So I love all my athletes, but I also want to say that he's from St. Andrew Northwest, Delran, and also Christina has ties in the constituency. So all our team within St. Andrew, they will be in Granville with us as we have informational booths, where our young people also have a safe space where they can speak about issues of mental health. We'll have Child Protection Authority there, also providing information. So there'll be many booths. And so, we urge young people from St. Andrew and other areas to come, because what we will have, we'll also have gifts for at the end for the person who, the persons who are at all the different caravans. So this is our first initiative. We also have the Empower Program that provides support for our young arthritsman. You see, brothers and sisters, as the Ministry of Youth, we are not there only to provide training, but we are there as facilitator, because this government provide assistance for young people in mostly all of our ministries. So sometimes you hear opposition say they cut the youth budget. But aren't we spending millions by having the Monroe First Generational, um, First Generational Degrees? Where hundreds of young people are able now to get a first degree? This government is big on education. We do not want to keep people in the corner and dependent on us and always have to come back to us. We are providing support where our young people can thrive. And so, we'll continue as a government, we'll continue as a ministry to provide support, we'll continue to walk along with ministry like the Ministry of Agriculture, who also has a youth in agriculture. From our many youth talk last year, many of our young people came forward, and they were talking about their interest in agriculture. And so, we will provide the support. We also will be launching youth, a youth small business, and many of our young people already registered, but very soon, we will tell you exactly what is happening as it regards to that. We continue to provide support. We are planting seeds today that will blossom into stronger, more resilient, more empowered Grenada tomorrow. Every initiative, every conversation, every investment is guided by one principle: the future belongs to our young people. Not only the future, the now, because I just showcased you many young people who are part of this government in the high level, but there are other people within different ministry who have high positions. So let's continue. So let's continue to support them. Let's leave them up, and let's remind them, your government sees you, believes in you, and walk in this journey with you. As I wrap up, I also want to touch on the issue of mental health. All year round, I gave you a brief to say that will be in every school, will be in different communities. We know that since the advent of Hurricane Ivan, the rehabilitation home for people with alcohol and drug abuse was damaged, nothing was done. This government is putting their money where their mouth is. And the very fact that our Prime Minister has vision to set up a ministry aimed at mental health speaks to the priority that we as a government give to mental health. And so, we are already clear the site in Merbo. We, the fencing is being completed as we speak, and we are hoping that bidding can go out in the last quarter of 2025, where we will see work beginning. We have done a number of infrastructure development as it relates to Monge Mental Hospital, we have hired more doctors, we have provide more training for staff there, and we'll provide even more this year as part of our budget allocation, and we'll continue to provide upgrade and to provide the development so that all our people can have a better life and thrive. Thank you, brothers and sisters.
And thank you, Sister Delma Thomas, Minister for Youth, Sports, Mental Health, and Religious Affairs. And now, we present to you your MP and Minister for Climate Resilience, Renewable Energy and the Environment, the Honourable Karen James. Let's welcome her. Following the minister's presentation, we will take questions from the audience, so just be mindful of that. So Minister, you have the floor at this time, we welcome you once again.
Thank you so much, Mistress of Ceremony. Good evening to my cherished constituents of St. John, and to those visiting from other parishes, and of course, to those that are tuning online. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I stand with great pride and profound gratitude as we gather for this National Tongue Hall right here in our beloved constituency. First, allow me to sincerely thank you, those who are in the constituency or the parish, for your continuous support and your steadfast confidence you have shown me throughout my tenure with my leadership here over the past two years. Your trust is my greatest motivation as we continue to work together to transform the constituency into a model of sustainable development, resilience, and the community spirit. I know, ladies and gentlemen, that there are voices that suggest otherwise, but tonight, I want to place on record some of the profound work and the progress that we have done so far, we have been able to accomplish so far in the constituency. And so, at the end of it, I hope that you know, things are happening in St. John, and we continue to ensure that my leadership is not one that is of many words, but one that holds not only promises as well, but action to back it up. So ladies and gentlemen, I would first begin going into the infrastructure development that we have taken on so far. We have taken bold strategic actions to enhance our community's infrastructure significantly through critical roadway improvements. We have completed roadway improvements in key areas such as Black Bay, Dalton Estate, Power Park, Douglastania Estate, Cocoa Town, and Florida, resulting in safer, more durable, and efficient road networks for our farmers, our residents, and businesses. We have also managed to have major drainage upgrades executed in Loretto, substantially mitigating the risk of flood, flooding and erosion, something that we are faced with on an annual basis during the rainy season. And we have been able to protect homes and agricultural lands as well. Ladies and gentlemen, we also have been able to, through the Community Development Funds, we have been able to do some infrastructure development at our Douglastan Cemetery. So those of you who have gone to Philharms over the last few months, those of you who have good foot like me, we have extended and we have created footpaths for those, because we are now burying persons at the far top of the cemetery. It's quite hilly, so we have erected railings as well as a footpath. We have also upgraded the facility there for persons who are non-denominational. There is a little outside gazebo as well, so we have done repairs on that as well to make it more attractive. And we have also done significant repairs on the washroom facility there. Very soon, you would be able to use there. I know sometimes when persons make the long journey from the churches to the cemetery, they have to go and use neighboring toilet facilities in business places and so, because they have not been, you know, proper facilities for them. So we have been able to do that for our residents. We have also, through the support, and I want to big up the Ministry of Mobilization, Implementation, and Transmission in a big way, ladies and gentlemen, because, yeah, we can clap them, we can clap them. One of the, you can stand, yeah, that's acting Prime Minister. Ladies and gentlemen, because one of the biggest projects that I have been walking behind everybody in the Ministry of Infrastructure, my road officer is probably tired of me, the P S's that were changed and the new ones now, as well as the C T U and others might have been very frustrated with me. But ladies and gentlemen, when we speak about representing the people, and you actually go on the ground, and you see some of the aging infrastructure, the road infrastructure that we've had over the past few years that have been neglected, I'm talking about areas where they couldn't almost, it was almost a situation whereby they would not have even had access, easy access to come to the tongue to do their business. We're talking about persons who are elders in the area, persons with disabilities in the area. And so, the Monger Road Rehabilitation Project, ladies and gentlemen, is one that is very near and dear to me. This road has collapsed since before the general elections, and we are going into three years in June. So we could say well over five years that road has collapsed. And myself and the former, the former representative used to have to travel our road to get to our homes, but for lack of a better term, it was neglected. And so, when the rainy season came last year, the road was broken, but it collapsed in most of the areas of that road. And so, I'm happy to announce that we have commenced work there. So it's a phased project. We are going to first, we have first worked on building the retaining wall so that we can ensure that the, there's no landslide, and we are going to also put in some culverts, and we are going to rehabilitate the road with some widening attached to it. So I know the residence of Monger Road, it's a road that went on GBN, it's a road that went on MTV, and it's a road that I promised the residents there that I have never forgotten about it. And while it was not under my tenure that it gotten bad, but we are here to fix it, I am here to fix it, and my representation is true and real representation. So the Monger Road Project is well underway. Similarly, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a scary situation in another community, low down to the southern part of the constituency, and that is Grand Roy. Just below the medical center, you would notice that there is a slight precipice there. There was a monument that was painted there for our cultural icon, Sparrow, and we are now in process, and I'm happy to report that work will commence in May, very early May of this year, to build the retaining wall there, so that project will be completed before the rainy season starts. Ladies and gentlemen, alongside the Palms Dig Road, we have also commenced doing some remedial temporary works to help the farmers who traverse that area there to ply their trade and to go to their lands. But we are, we have given, we're given a commitment by the Ministry of Infrastructure, and we will commence road rehabilitation for the Palms Dig Road in May as well of this year. Ladies and gentlemen, another road that has been quite up for grabs was the Snake Road. The Snake Road is a project, three men had the project, three of them died, one died twice. One died twice, but we, as a government and as your representative, we understand what happened, and we're not looking backwards, but we're looking forward. And so, we have been able to identify through the road office, our Works Office in the constituency, as well as the Ministry of Infrastructure, we have gone through, looking and see what were the remaining of work that needs to happen there. And so, we are going to complete that project finally. It's almost bearing ten years we have that project on, but we are going to complete that project, ladies and gentlemen, and we're targeting by mid-May to finish that Snake Road project. So the people of Loretto, Florida, who without that road cannot access and come to Guav and rest of the constituency, you will rest assured that that project will complete finally mid-May. Ladies and gentlemen, the Maboya Road as well too, we have a comprehensive rehabilitation project aimed for that area as well, and we are hoping that we can begin this rehabilitation by July fifteenth of this year. Under Housing and Social Development, our commitment to improving living conditions and fostering community resilience remains steadfast, ladies and gentlemen. We have constructed over thirty new homes and repaired fifty existing structures underneath the National Housing Program, underneath social development and housing. And we are currently awaiting approval for about fifty more of this year, for this year so far, significantly improving living conditions for many families in St. John. We have had more than forty bathroom and toilets built, dramatically enhancing sanitation and the dignity for vulnerable households in the constituency. Additionally, ladies and gentlemen, we have thirty-five new bathrooms ongoing, we have thirty-two housing repairs ongoing, and we have the construction of fifteen new homes underneath the contractors' part of the housing program currently ongoing. Miss, ladies and gentlemen, I just go to say Mr. Speaker, you know. Ladies and gentlemen, because it feels like the People's Parliament, you report, you have elected us to represent you, and you, we have a right to report to you as well. So it's the People's Parliament tonight, alright? Under Community Development and Community Support, ladies and gentlemen, we understand no black notes here tonight, just straight information and facts and action. We understand that a resilient community is built on strong supportive social frameworks, and so, we have made an investment under Community Development Funds of nearly sixty-five thousand dollars strategically directed towards giving small businesses in the constituency support. We have supported educational initiatives and cultural community events, fostering economic empowerment and social cohesion. Direct support, ladies and gentlemen, have been provided as well to persons for medical needs and assistance, educational scholarships to support and to give a buffer to what is already existing under the Ministry of Education. So for some persons, they might be able to qualify for the scholarship under the S U, the S U program whereby... whereby they get ninety percent of their tuition waiver. But for some of them, they're either unemployed, they're either the only income earners in their families, and so they cannot, for example, pay the bus to go. There are some who lives as far as in Cloget, Saint John, there is no public bus system there. So every time they have to come down to get a bus in Gauve to go down to school, they would have to take a taxi, which is forty dollars, just to come down to get to Gauve. So we have supported and complemented what the Ministry of Education have been doing under the educational scholarships. We have also given support to our elderly who, Minister, we have to work on the numbers for the, because I find Saint John had the lowest numbers for the C program, eh? Right? It might be a good thing that we are independent and, you know, we putting things in place and we have our acts together. But quite a number of our elderly still today who have, probably families have abandoned them. We help them with their utility connections, some of them reconnections. Some of them never had water connections before, so we are helping them now because it's water, it's a human rights. And so persons have to have that level of dignity and comfort, especially if you have not had it for a lot of years in your life, and you are dumb now, you are eating amputee, you have hypertension, you cannot work, you are blind, you have special needs, you have children with special needs, we need access to water. So we have been able to give connection, provide connection, support to these vulnerable households. For this year, ladies and gentlemen, we are also hoping to tap into more of our social skills. I don't believe, and I have a fundamental and firm position on that, that community development should surpass, replacing or replicating what the Ministry of Infrastructure should do, and by extension, the Ministry of M I T. Community development is also about ensuring that our persons, our young people are skilled. It's ensuring that they are educated outside of the formal setting of education. And so we will continue to give skills training and certification initiatives in collaboration with the Ministry of Health, the Nutrition Division, among other ministries. We had, we held a food handlers and mixology workshop last year in collaboration with the Gauve Improvement Committee. And so that was a well-received initiative. It had equipped residents with qualifications needed to enhance their employability and economic independence for the festive seasons that were held last year. And this year as well, we are going to help them as well because you have to ensure that if you're preparing food to sell for people, it has to be at a proper standard, right? And we have to ensure that we're not, you know, raising all kind of different foodborne diseases. So it was something that was well received, and we are going to continue with that this year. We have also supported, and we're in the fishing capital of Grenada. My comrade from Saint Mark would say otherwise, but the record would show fishing capital of Grenada is Gauve. And so ladies and gentlemen, it would be a rebirth of me if we did not use community development as well to support our fishers. They have a very risky job. They go out with no hopes of them returning, with no surety or guarantee that they would return. They work the hardest, and sometimes they don't have things in place to help them to improve and expand their businesses. And so we are in constant support of them, holding their hands, ensuring that we let them know that the fishing industry is our business, is not a hustle. We have seen a lot of young people coming into being interested and wanting to do the trade, but we are holding their hands very closely. And so ladies and gentlemen, we have given out vouchers to our fisher folks, total into fourteen thousand dollars for critical gear, reinforcing sustainable practices and livelihoods. Added to that, before the elections, we have also, through the support of friends and family members, I was able to give out a total of over seventy-eight thousand dollars in G P S and other gears for the fishing vessels. We have been able to do that as well in the year of twenty-twenty-two. And so while we are giving more softer sides of the vouchers to them now to help them with nets and gears and all those things that normally would have to be replaced on a, you know, monthly, bimonthly basis, we are hoping to give them much more additional support in engines, procuring of engines. We're also giving them support in building, helping them construct their vessels as well. Ladies and gentlemen, you'll see a lot of things happening and you heard a lot of our, my colleagues speak about solar initiatives and solar lighting initiatives. So you definitely know that the Minister for Climate Resilience, Environment, and Renewable Energy is doing a great job when so much people in the government can't speak about renewable energy and energy efficiency. So as it, pardon? And we have an energy fan right here, ladies and gentlemen. So we brought some things on the space. So as it relates to solar street lighting, ladies and gentlemen, I am happy to announce that approximately three hundred solar lights was installed across several communities in Saint John within the new year and the latter part of last year. We have installed lights in Bamboo, Power Park, Marigot Bay, Old Road, Palmas, Gauve Estate, Concord Mountain Road, and I want to highlight Concord Mountain Road. Because ladies and gentlemen, that area, the people from Concord, you can clap. They would tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that while this is a tourist destination, while we have quite a number of tourists coming and residents alike who enjoys nature, come there and they bathe in the Concord Waterfall area, we have had quite a number of deaths occurring in that area, ladies and gentlemen. And the single reason for that, well, I'm not a specialist, specialist and I'm not an expert as well, but there is no connectivity in Concord Mountain Road whatsoever, and it has been so for decades. There is no internet access, so when you get up to there, you have, for those who are living there can tell you that they have no access on their phones. When you get up there as a visiting visitor, you would lose connection on your phones. And that area has never had internet connectivity, they have never had any street lighting, so it's pitch black. So if you're going to Concord Waterfall, you know that you have to go there during the daytime and before sunset. Now, this affects businesses in a big way because they cannot, for example, if tourists doesn't come with any cash on them, they can't use a card machine because there is no connectivity. So added to the solar lights that were installed there this year, ladies and gentlemen, I have been working very closely with the N T R C to bring internet access to the residents of Concord Mountain Road. And so it's a project as well that we're working on. And we hope that our private sector persons can come on board with us as well to ensure that this is a reality before the year ends. We've also been able to install solar streetlights, ladies and gentlemen, in Mongramby, as well as Gauve Estate and the town of Gauve. This, as you heard a testimony by the speaker that went before me, talk about how it has enhanced security and how low-hanging fruits, you know, have such an impact in ordinary people's lives. When we driving in our vehicles and we just passing there, we don't realize, you know, how transformational that is. And I'm very happy that we have been able to do that and persons can actually, you know, they can interact with what is happening internationally as well as regionally. The solar streetlights, ladies and gentlemen, is a low-hanging fruit, but it speaks towards us going into that energy transition. It speaks to us bringing renewable energy to the people. It speaks to us not having that philosophical or intellectual conversations and negotiations, but actually bringing it down on the grassroots so that you understand that it's your lives and your livelihood that will be positively impacted. So that program, ladies and gentlemen, with the solar streetlights, has been something that, and I was about to get political, but political caps off because it's a national town hall. But it has been a project that has been on the books by our political party for a long time through our Sustainable Development Documents and our manifestos. And so to see it actually coming into fruition now, where there is so much, you know, it's a sexy topic now. Everybody talks about solar, everybody talks about renewable energy now, but this is not new to the people that's in government now. So I'm happy about that project, and I want to thank the Ministry of Community Development as well as Ministry of Mobilization, Implementation, and Transformation for actually helping us to deploy as much solar lights throughout the constituencies. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a video, but I would ask the tech team to play it at the end, but I will talk it now. I hope the Madam Mistress of Ceremony would spare me a few minutes because we're in the best parish, right? The Solar For All, ladies and gentlemen. On your way here this evening, when you was coming up the stairs, you might have seen a standing billboard with some solar panels and something that looked like a battery pack attached to that billboard. When you came upstairs, you have seen so many different things that the Ministry of Climate Resilience, Environment, and Renewable Energy has been doing. One of the flagship programs and one of the most transformational project that we will be launching this year underneath our fiscal budget for this year is the Solar For All project. This project, ladies and gentlemen, it says it for itself. We are bringing for households who, for whatever reason, maybe not having enough income. Some of them might have had connections before, and they would have lost the connections because they can't afford to pay the bill. Some of them have a lot of children in the household, and there's no really help or so. We are going to ensure that every house in Grenada has access to electricity. And so the Solar For All project, ladies and gentlemen, will bring, you would see houses, yes, you can clap. You would see houses having solar panels on it. These would be fitted as well with a refrigerator that is also energy efficient as well as energy efficient fans. And for those who can afford it, efficient, energy efficient A Cs as well. And it's not only for our households, but for those young people who are in the producing industries, the agricultural producing industries, who are making products out of like peppers and so, and they're making pepper sauce and all those things that pools a lot of energy, we are going to help them as well. And I want to highlight one of the businesses in my constituency that I since I have engaged this young lady and her husband, I fell in love with them because they are young couples and they make so much of good products. They make planting chips, they make sweet potato fries, one of my favorite. They make breadfruit flour, cassava flour, the list goes on and on. And when you hear the story of the brand, it touched me. And so we are going to assist them to bring down that electricity cost. So the farmer's daughter, Gerald, and your husband, I don't know where you all sit you. So thank you for that, but we want to ensure that we deliver affordable and reliable renewable energy solutions, ladies and gentlemen, to households and small businesses across the constituencies in Grenada to ensure that they have equitable access to energy and to ensure that, you know, they have invested so much in their trade and their businesses, and we have to help them, we have to give them a hand up. So this is our way through the Ministry of ensuring that we not only fulfill the international and regional negotiations and agendas, but we give them examples of what it means to be the minister, what it means to get on board with the transition for renewable energy. Ladies and gentlemen, another key area as well that we have been vigorously targeting both at interim and long-term planning is the sagazam management. Grenada continues to lead regional efforts and international efforts as well in addressing the environmental and economic challenges posed by sagazam influxes. So in response to the influx, ladies and gentlemen, we've been experiencing that over, and it's a seasonal thing. So over the Easter holidays, you might have seen videos, you might have seen images as well showing that, you know, the influx started on the eastern side, and now it is in a large volume on the southern zone. And this morning, ladies and gentlemen, we have seen it, and maybe some of you might have seen it as well too on your way here, on the west side, Palmas, don't talk for the lands bay. So as an immediate relief, ladies and gentlemen, we have implemented our twenty-twenty-five operational response plan. This is the local plan now, where we have hired thirty-two temporary workers, and we have deployed the Coast Guard assets to manage the seaweed collection effectively in the Marquee and Subies area. As of March first, twenty-twenty-five, priority has been given so far on that side to residential areas. The materials collected are taken to telescope. In collaboration with the G T A, we are responding to the influx of sagazam on the west coast. And so we have the Yahama boats at the Coast Guard base, and we are mobilizing and we intend to launch and deploy the floating fence that we have and to collect the sagazam in water using trawl nets. The materials will be landed at the Grand Mall jetty, and it will be taken to Possiverance landfill. Priority is given to the commercial areas as well. The trawl nets will be used to collect sagazam in water on the west coast from tomorrow. And we are going to be landing at the Gauve jetty, and it will be taken to Possiverance. The boats will be returned to the Coast Guard base at the end of each working day as a matter of security. So in the interim, we are dealing with it at the local level. Obviously, you cannot, you cannot really, there's no means of predicting it really where it would go because the tidal, the wave, and all kind of thing, we just can't predict where you're gonna go. But we are trying our utmost to deal with it. So minus the noise and just focus on there is interim steps that we are taking, and these are the few steps that we are taking thus far. At a more long-term and economically viable industry and with support from the European Union, our task force that has been formed has committed to valorizing sagazam. And for those of us who don't really know what valorizing means, it simply means adding a value to what was dim, what is dim as a nuisance. So we are adding a value to sagazam. So ten thousand tons of sagazam have been pledged and supported that we're gonna collect ten thousand tons by twenty-twenty-six, creating sustainable economic opportunities and safeguarding our coastal ecosystems. Grenada, ladies and gentlemen, proudly hosted the Second Caribbean E U Regional Global Gateway Conference on sagazam last October, positioning us at the forefront of innovative regional strategies and international partnerships. Following this, key outcomes included, but it's not limited to, commitment to process the ten thousand tons of sagazam by twenty-twenty-six, a pledge made and supported by our Prime Minister, the launch of an expression of interest, or E O I, inviting private sector proposals for the valorization solutions by January twenty-twenty-five, so that has gone, strategic dialogues on offshore collection, resource mobilization, and regional scalability, active engagement from public and private sector representatives, including the G I Z, which is an organization underneath the German government through the Ministry of Environment in Germany, and expertise from France. Participation of fifty in-person and a hundred virtual stakeholders contributing to technical and financial assessments as well was also one of the key outcomes that we are happy to boast about. The evaluations of the expression of interest and site assessments. So we have had thirty-one proposals received in January of this year for the expression of interest. Thirteen organizations or firms have been shortlisted out of that thirty-one to submit comprehensive technical and financial proposals now. We have assessed several sites for the valorization infrastructure. So we want sites where it doesn't take too much, it doesn't take too long of a process for us to take it from where we take it offshore and we bring it to a facility. But we have looked at buildings across Grenada, one of them being the Public Works Building in Saint John, the old fish markets on the lands, Pearl's Esprit, the Marquee Fisher Facility Expansion in Saint Andrew, and the Mary Bow Farm School. Looking ahead, our community-driven development continues with the planned rehabilitations. And we intend to do, if for whatever reason we have to choose one of these sites and they need to be rehabilitated, we are going to do so in the process. So at the international level, ladies and gentlemen, we are doing great things based on the outcomes of our conference last year and based on where we are at now in terms of having the task force lead discharge now and go towards evaluating when we receive the thirteen proposals. We are going to be featured, I think it's in Brussels, of June this year as well as one of the flagship countries where we have used sagazam or we intending to use sagazam to bring an economic opportunity for small island developing states. So we are doing big things. A lot of the larger countries are looking on to us. They are looking forward to seeing what we are doing here. So we are both dealing with the national, local challenges, and we're also planning for the future. And I must highlight while I close the point on the sagazam, ladies and gentlemen. And I must highlight while I close the point on the sagazam, ladies and gentlemen, we also have businesses currently here in Grenada, one of them being SAGAS. It is partly local and they have gotten some support from other international countries as well. And they are also using sagazam to create bioenergy. We've had hotels in Grenada as well who have surpassed that a long time ago and they have their biodigesters and so such as True Blue Bay Resort, they have done quite a lot in terms of, you know, projecting environmental sustainability and also promoting renewable energy. So we want to commend them for a job well done and we are here as a government to continue to promote public-private partnerships for this whole environmental process. Looking ahead in terms of the constituency, ladies and gentlemen, we have planned rehabilitation for playing fields and I heard Minister for Sports talk very boastfully and filled with great pride of our athletes who was on the character team. And so I want to remind Minister that quite a lot of them came from the great parish. So we are looking forward to the Ministry of Sports in working with us in the constituency to rehabilitating. We have identified two playing fields so far. It's a lot more to go, but we're making small steps at a time. We can't do everything in three years. We're making small steps and so we have identified two playing fields, the Florida playing field and the Montgrat playing fields. And so I'm happy to report that the minister has given a commitment towards the rehabilitation of these playing fields. I know there are some people in the audience who came specifically to hear what we are going to say about these playing fields. So I just want to give you assurance and right Minister, we working on rehabilitating these two playing fields before twenty twenty-five ends. Finally, ladies and gentlemen, I want to also highlight, you know, the importance and what Guaaf is known for. Guaaf is known for, apart from our Sir Kieran E. James, apart from Mr. Killer, apart from all of these individual icons that we've had, not only in the area of sports, we have had doctors, I mean impressive doctors, we've had governor generals, the only thing we never had yet is our prime minister, but we put in dot, dot, dot after that. But we have raised quite a number of great men within the field of culture, heritage and so. And so I really want us, one of the key things that was on my campaign, one of my key campaign promises was to see how best we can improve the product of St. John and to bring something better to the people of St. John in terms of our cultural presentations. We've, we have one of the biggest celebrations of the Feast of St. Peter and Paul, Fisherman's Birthday, twenty-nine June in Grenada and might I dare say in the region. We have one of the best, we were the first community, the first parish that ever had a juve morning, Monday and Tuesday style mass. We were the, the innovators of Monday night mass. If you don't know, Mr. Wayne Maggety Redhead, Monday Night Mass started in Guaaf. We, yes, 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 tell them. All right, ladies and gentlemen, right in Guaaf it started. And so we are known for our vibrancy, we are known for our energy and our good vibes. But over the years, the product of carnival in our communities on the west coast has deteriorated and by no means we can blame anyone for that. So as representative who understand that, as someone who have been in the, in the industry for quite a while, for those of you who know me, know me as a dancer from since age five, have been with the Spices Dance Company, I think that we, we, we resolve to get back our economic independence, we deserve to bring, to, to, to bring structure towards our celebrations in St. John so that we can educate our young ones. Those persons who would have died just across the street, we had one of the best masqueraders who used to have really good mask bands, Cabo Sam, we had Crane, Mr. Justin Edwards, who was a singer, as well as one of the best, he won quite a number of the king and queen of the mask bands, those who like the marcha, I love the marcha. And so that kind of attitude and that kind of, when you talk about the creative industry, this is what the creative industry means to us in St. John. And so what I have done is to bring all of the committees that are in the constituency together, just for us to sit down and talk among ourselves to assess really what has been the challenges with us and how we can ensure that we have a better offering for our residents in not only Guaaf, St. John as a parish. And so we have gotten the support from the Spice Mask Corporation earlier on in March to hold our first stakeholder consultation with persons that do the music production, those that have the bands, now Tanti Mul Britten, she is a Godsend, we have to make a cultural ambassador and we have to give her her award for keeping up the culture in St. John. We, 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 so we have gone through that first phase of engagement. And so what we're gonna do now, tomorrow please the Lord, we are going to hold a local town hall meeting. So that would include all those persons who are in pan. We have several pan bands in, in, in pan orchestras in, in St. John. We have a number of persons who have mini events in St. John. We have persons who want to have Monday night mass bands. We have persons who want to have fancy mass. We have persons who want to play juve right through the carnival season. But this year, we are going to do the thing more organized and more proper. So we are inviting all the persons who have an interest in carnival, all the persons who have an interest in the Feast of St. Peter and Paul Fisherman's Birthday celebration to come out to the St. Rose Modern Secondary School to be a part of the dialogue. The committees have agreed to share with you what the offerings are, what their timetable look like for the year. It's not a time for us to go on and bad talk and say, well, nothing happening and da, 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 and the minister will do nothing, da, da, da. It's a time for us now to put aside our ego, put aside our emotions and come to the table and plan and take back what is ours, what Guaaf is known for, which is positivity, good vibes and a well-executed event. So we're inviting you to come out and at seven PM tomorrow at the St. Rose Modern Secondary School. But ladies and gentlemen, all in all, I could go on about all of the things that we have been able to accomplish. Some you would never hear me post, you'll never hear me talk and you'll never see me post about because I believe even if we are in this as politicians and as representatives, we have to post. I come from very humble backgrounds and I, I don't believe in using people's vulnerability to gain any political mileage. Call me old school, but there are some things that we have been able to do as well for families in St. John that you would not see me talking, you would not hear me talking and you would not see me posting about. And that's just simply how I stay. You like it, you don't like it, that's how I stay. But ladies and gentlemen, for the greater projects that will not only impact individual households or persons, for the projects that will be executed that would enhance our infrastructure development in the constituency, for the project that would enhance the human side, our human capacity within the parish, those that would give those young people economic independence, economic stability, those that would support young women who, you know, probably fell off the radar for whatever reason, those who have been lost, those who don't even know what they, what they intend to do, those who can't even be good role models to their children now. We are going to hold hands, ladies and gentlemen, and we are going to ensure every child, every man, every woman, as long as you are positive, as long as you have a positive mindset and you want to better your circumstances, we are here to support you and we want to hold your hand. Whatever color you may be is not my business. I am here to represent the people of St. John. We don't turn our backs to nobody. We are open for all, we are supporting all. And so if you believe that we can assist you in whatever way possible, come to my office right on Fish Friday Street, let us chat, we will get the right persons on board with us. If there is any other critical infrastructure, road rehabilitation that you think that is needed for the constituency that I have not highlighted, feel free to meet me at the end of it or maybe stand and we can have a discussion on it. But I wanna say that this job is not an easy job. You have to show up when you're not well, you have to show up when you don't really want to, you have to show up when you're spiritually and physically drained, but you have to show up because we, this is what we agreed to and this is what we sign up for. But what I would not tolerate, ladies and gentlemen, is the disrespect by persons who feel as though that despite my, because of my age and they're all around me that they can disrespect me. I don't stand for disrespect. So ladies and gentlemen, it is not an easy job, but I think it's safe to say that myself as well as the entire team that is given the monumental task of governing this country has done a phenomenal job in a short space of time. Sometimes it is difficult for me to even fathom that we are approaching three years. I feel like we've been there for twenty based on the things that we have been able to accomplish. And it's not just us giving ourselves an individual grade, but it's to hear it on the ground, in the field where we are four, seven, five, four to seven, five days a week in the fields, listening to the residents, listening to the people. We hear the feedback and so we know we are doing a good job. We wanna thank those who have, you know, placed their trust in us. We wanna thank those who continue to even identify when we might slip up, when we might make mistakes. We are humans and we are not, we are not shying away from, even if you make a mistake, we may not like how you approach us, but bet your bottom dollar, it resonates in somebody in our head and we intend to do better, we intend to represent you better. So feel free to always support us, pray for your government, because any government that fails, the country fails. You don't want that. Our young people is distracted by so many things, things that we could see and things that we cannot see. And so we have to ensure that we protect them, that we guide them and that we leave a path that is better. We don't want us to go through no struggles because we walk to school barefoot, we try and have to walk to school barefoot. That mentality is an old mentality and is no longer there. We don't want to continue to be invulnerable people. We want to be independent people and we want to continue to live independence for our people. So if your government is strong, your country is strong. If you are strong with us, we are strong as a government. So we thank you for your support and we look forward to our continued partnership as we continue to lead this country forward. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Minister. And thank you so much for that video and your presentation, Minister Karine James. We now open the floor for questions from the audience, questions, comments, suggestions. We now open the floor. There are two microphones, remember to just go straight to your question and we will take your responses. Go ahead, the farmer's daughter is on the floor.
Hello? Good night to everyone and good night to the members of the head table, protocol already been established. I just have a question to ask concerning the IMEXA entity. Will IMEXA be working with farmers and agroprocessors directly or will the organization be using a representative approach? In other words, what I'm saying is if I have a new product that I need assistance with some market research for, will I be allowed to just walk into IMEXA and say, hey, can I get assistance for that? Or is it I have to go through a representative for agroprocessors or farmers to get that job done, that's one. And the other one concerns education and I wanna find out about the possibility of skills-based training being done at a primary school level at least twice monthly in foundational areas of skills such as home economics or cookery, carpentry, sewing, shoemaking, which is also a dying craft in Grenada, and repair, crochet and straw work. Those skills, I think they help with the development of our young people. And if you look shop, crochet made in suzies a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars for one and if you have to repair a pair of shoes right now, it's between fifteen and twenty-five. I think these are the little things that will assist our young people if we start at the foundation level, which is primary.
Thank you. Excellent question. So we leave the skills training for Minister Education. We lost the chairman of the Technical Working Group, he had to leave. So if somebody from the Technical Working Group could respond to the first question, we'll be appreciative.
Hello? Good evening, Ministers. Ladies and our guests, our invitees and the general public here and, and listening, and listening on the internet. The question that you asked about if IMEXA would facilitate small businesses that have an idea, if they would assist them. Remember, IMEXA will be partly owned by government, majority private sector owned, that's the intention. And if there is an opportunity for a business to make money, so if you have a product that this business can invest in and scale, it will be foolish of them not to. But you would have to sell your idea. You would have to sell your idea, you would have to sell your product. There's a Grenada Development Bank which helps small business people. There are a number of, of, of opportunities that we've just heard tonight and programs, some of which I didn't even know about, that is available for the general public. The government is doing quite a lot. But this particular entity will be based, will be interested in agro-processing, assisting the farmers, strengthening the linkages between agriculture and not only selling basic fruits and vegetables, but adding value to them so that they can be, they can be exported. So right along the lines of what you're speaking about, I can't say for sure yes because it has not been formed yet. But if they don't and it's a good idea, they'd be foolish not to. I hope that answers the question.
Senator David Andrew will respond to the question regarding skills training for the primary school students. And then we have a question from a young lad who is ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you very much and good night to everybody. Thank you very much for your question. Well, I'm happy to report that we have already started doing a lot more of the technical and vocational education and training in our primary schools. Within the last three years, well, almost, we have expanded the offerings of skills education to more of our primary schools. And we even have, in schools where there are no labs, we have a mobile itinerant set of teachers that go to the schools and ensure that more of our primary school students get exposed to skills education. So they do get exposed to home economics, home management, construction, furniture making, a bit of that, all packaged at the primary level. And the plan, the hope is to ensure that the more they get exposed at that level, more of them will gravitate towards those skilled areas in the secondary schools, right? That's part of the bigger plan that we have for skills education, including skill centers and all of that, which I would not go into at the moment, but we are doing that. Now, whether or not we can go as far and wide as to crochet and knitting and all of those things, I, I'm not sure I will necessarily support it to that thin or broad extent because I think we are targeting areas that are of critical economic importance to the country so that when people come out of those areas, there's a natural pathway to absorb their skill sets into our economy and ensure that they can be employable and they benefit the economy well. Thank you very much for your question.
Thank you, Senator, for the response. We have a question from a young man. You can step up to the mic.
Good night all. I just wanna say hats off to the Minister for Social Development.
Sorry. Sorry, we'll, we'll take you after. We have a young, a young man at the front first and then we'll take your question after. Sorry about that. Can you go ahead?
Good night, everybody. My name is Ryan Charles. Good night, everybody. My name is Ryan Charles and the question is, what I want to ask is, how can I get a solar light for my community? Because sometimes... Because sometimes when, when I try to walk off home, it does be very dark.
Mr. Charles, you're home.
And where I live is Windsor Forest, St. David.
All right, thank you, Mr. Charles. We'll log it. Um, unfortunately, your MP, um, is not here, but we can, um, log that.
But the team is in St. David now, Mr. Charles. So, but by, you know, on the light side, I think you should be home before you get dark. Right? Right? But nevertheless, um, it's gonna, it's, 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 the team is in St. David's now, um, doing light through MIT. MIT could, Minister, Acting Prime Minister could, um, um, confirm that. But I know that they're in St. David's currently, so Windsor Forest is on the list, so your, your concern is noted, all right? But next time, just get home before you get dark, all right? Because you have a bright future ahead.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. All right, um, there was a man at the back, you can ask your question. You can go ahead now.
All right, um, good night. I just want to say hats off to the Minister for Social Development.
All right, if you can, um, put a mic closer to your mouth, you can, you can hear you.
I just want to say hats off to the Minister for Social Development, whereby she spoke about the bill that was passed in Parliament regarding disabled persons. I say hats off to you for that. I'm a member of the council, I'm disabled, I'm also physically challenged, walk with a pair of crutches. That is appreciated. Um, regarding the solar lights, I hope that your advisors would have told you all, now I'm an electrician, I'm a technician by profession. I hope that somebody would have told you all that these things need maintenance. At least every quarter, these solar lights, they needs to be maintained by an electrician or a technician. Because what would happen is that they would just go off and you'd wonder why they gone off. But it'd be very simple to solve. Yeah? So, well, yeah, um, Minister Williams knows my number. Uh, the MIT staff that knows my number. So if you all need assistance, let me know.
Yes, sir. I forgot to name, but I like you. I like you. Promote the business one time, dear. So, um, but I just wanted to make a more substantive comment in that the technology for solar has improved so drastically. So whereas before you would have seen, um, that there is need to have quarterly or, um, bi-monthly maintenance. Um, with these lights that we have now and with the other, like the solar PV, the modules and so, it doesn't necessarily need that, um, frequent maintenance. But there is a maintenance, um, plan that is also attached to it. The national, the, the nationally determined contributions, our NDCs, has, um, highlighted some of the areas. We are now in the, in the process of revising that document. And this is not the National Democratic Congress, it's the nationally determined contributions of a country that each country have to provide under the Paris Agreement. So, um, we do have a schedule that will be forthcoming, but it will not need the maintenance now simply because the technology has drastically improved over the years.
Uh, just for the record, Latusha Plants Repairs and Electrical Services, just for the record.
All right, thank you. You may proceed. You have the floor.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.
Good night to the head table, good night to everyone. Um, first, I want to compliment the government for the super hard work, work that you guys are doing. But my question tonight is to Minister Claudette. Now Sheldon Scott is on talking point. Lambasting our dear Prime Minister and his government, right? I would like to know if you can give us an update about the monies that Sheldon Scott owing our government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Um, first of all, I'll make the point that in these types of matters, legal matters, um, we act on legal principles rather than on emotions. That said, we have been in communication with Mr. Scott on the repayment of the monies. Um, we are at the stage where he has admitted to that he, and has agreed that he will pay back the monies. Let me finish. Let me finish now. The issue, the issue now is that our position is that in law, he, he is obligated to pay interest on the money at this point. Um, he's obligated to pay interest on the money. He doesn't want to pay interest. So what we have ultimately decided that we will do is that we will proceed to court since we could not, we, we, we could not arrive at a negotiated, um, settlement. So we have completed preparation of the case and quite truthfully, it's just a matter of filing the, the, the case against him. So we are ready to do that, that, that will be done at any time. Yeah? So it's, it's just a matter of him not agreeing that he is obligated to pay interest on the money. And we want all the money, including interest. So that's where we are now. Yeah. Somebody's asking how much is the interest? It's six percent per annum on the amount owed. And six percent per annum as long as it remains unpaid. So, um, that's where we are.
Thank you, Senator, for that response. There's another question on the floor. You may proceed.
Good night, everyone. Good night, head table. Um, I would like to know, why is it that Lakaloom is just left behind? Because I got, I do my homework, I did my homework. The, the current housing scheme is well organized, right? They, they have twenty-four hour security service. Plus, I understand that one of the, one of the tenants, one of the person who's staying inside there, did her own stuff in the building where the government is taking her to court. So what is it that we sign a contract and we cannot get our land paper? Yeah? And why is, and why is it that I personally cannot get help in my house? Because I see everybody getting help and they're walking, I walk in too. But the tires on the floor is, is raising up. Yeah? So can y'all please help me?
Okay, so thank you, um. We will, uh, somebody from Ministry of Housing, you want to respond or is that a personal? So we could speak to the land, land regularization, the Minister of Agriculture will speak to that.
I present good afternoon, present good evening all. And let me thank the lady for the question. It provides an opportunity for, for us to update you on, on what is happening in Lakaloom. So I want to say this to you. So the Lakaloom housing scheme is part of the land regularization program. But Lakaloom itself falls directly under the National Housing Authority. There are two issues to Lakaloom. One is the land itself and the other is the house on the land. The understanding is that the house on the land was given as a gift to the occupants. But the land itself, the land itself is not a gift in itself. So we've taken the decision to provide you, provide you with an opportunity to purchase the land itself. Good? For this, it meant that we have to measure each area because in some cases, there are two houses on one plot of land. So we have to measure the area and identify the specific area which will be given to a particular household. So where we are right now is that, uh, the cabinet has in fact approved that the land on which the house is, that land will be made available to all of the occupants of the house. And the cabinet has given the directive to the National Housing Authority to issue letters, letters to those occupants indicating that you can now purchase your land at a particular price per square foot. That letter should be going out to the occupants very soon. Very soon, very soon, maybe in the next week or two. Okay? So that's where we are with, with the Lakaloom housing issue. The view is that once the people can now purchase their property, they of course, they can now go to the bank or financial institution and get a loan to renovate the house. Because in many cases, the houses are not in good conditions and they would want to renovate the house, but they need title to the land on which they are, on which the house is. So we are working on giving you that entitlement in a couple of weeks' time. Okay? So maybe I should also use the opportunity to say that we, under the reg, under the land regularization program, there are a number of people who have been given government land and who have paid for the land. Some of, of course, are still owing the taxes, we ask them to pay it. But we have paid, as a government, we have paid for the indenture, for the, the deed for that land. And we are planning the first distribution of those deeds to about fifty-four people. You're going to get an announcement very soon. Fifty-four of you would be receiving from the Prime Minister your deed of ownership of the land that government has given to you for some time now. Okay? So that will happen in a couple of weeks' time as well. So Lakaloom people, um, look out for us, the housing authority is going to issue with your, your letter very soon. I hope I'm clear?
Thank you, Minister. All right, if you have another question from Ms. Lewis at the front, you may proceed.
Good night again. I want to congratulate all the ministers for the exceptional job they have been doing. Senator Claudette, you're responsible for consumer affairs. I want to know if there are any persons who we call price control officers in the ministries going around, visiting shops and supermarkets to inspect because prices, especially food, is very high. They are not visible. I grew up knowing that you always find a big sheet of paper and the price with a list. So I don't know, maybe if we could come back to that, or that the persons, we see them in the community. I responsible for the telecommunications part, like Flow and DigiCell, because they deliver consumers. I think they are taking very much advantage of us. Especially like, I had problem with DigiCell with a SIM. You buy a SIM for ten dollars. You use it for two, three months, they're taking it and give it to somebody else. I find that is very wrong, that is robbery in high places. I think you need to do something about that. And with Flow, we have a problem. So the internet is up and down, you go there, you're spending hours and you're not getting through. Oh, yes, they increase the price. You have a plan, all in a year was fifty dollars, now it's fifty-five and the service is worse. For two months now, I'm paying and I ain't getting service, but I'll deal with them tomorrow, please God. My minister, you know I love you dearly. What I want to ask you, how soon are we getting a community center? How soon? I think it's a long overdue. I told you about buildings we can use. We need it because there are a lot of young children out there who have no place to congregate likewise. Because I'm involved with Mr. Glenn in bringing back chess and we need a place to do that. When I returning the road office that was in the pack, I think it's down in Busejo and that is St. George's, I think we need it in Guav. And what you forgot to say, what is the situation between the bridge leading to St. John's Christian Secondary School? The bridge is unfinished. Somebody told me that they see somebody walking and removing the material, I don't know to go away, but the walk, the person lives up there, but the walk is unfinished. We like to know, please, because my school is up there. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions and, and recommendations. Um, Minister James will respond. Minister James?
Yes, thank you for the questions on, um, consumer. Yes, we do have the price control officers. So I, I hear, I hear agreement in the audience that they are not as visible as they should be. So it is something that I would look into, um, from a ministerial point of view. But we do have price, price control officers who should be out. And, um, the complaints in relation to DigiCell and Flow, um, these are matters that we would have to look into at the Consumer Affairs Office. So I would speak with the officers there on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, Minister James, you may proceed.
Thank you, Auntie Judy, for the, for the, for the, the comments and the questions. Um, community centers. Currently, we only have one, um, or two functioning community centers for the entire parish. That is the Black Bay Community Center and, um, the Waterloo Community Center where the Pan Osea Orchestra is, 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 is there. Um, you would know that the, the, the building for, where Pan Osea is now is Pragati has invaded the building, yeah, invaded the building. And we have helped them, we're doing some, you know, cleanup, um, with that. But the structure is, is, is terrible. Um, so what we have done, we have put together a nice plan with, of all the community centers that we have in the parish. We have also identified, um, some new places that, because Guav is the only place, like the community of Guav is the only place in the parish that does not have a community center. And it is the largest community with, with the most amount of young people. So I, I have received a, a message the other day from a, a, a young lady who told me that some people might be interested in some land and that may be available and we can erect a structure. So I'll be looking, I would be engaging her this week, um, to tomorrow, to see the possibilities of that. What we have done so far, um, in terms of those existing communities, dilapidated community centers, we are, we are doing them one by one because most of them surpass two hundred thousand dollars. And you know, we have a limited budget term on the community development. So first, we have targeted, um, the Mount Granby Community Center because that community center was one of the community centers that needed least infrastructure rehabilitation. So we have received a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand dollars from the Republic of, um, China through the Chinese ambassador here. And we are awaiting a final approval from the Ministry of Community. And we are awaiting a final approval from the Ministry of Community Development for us to finalize the second part of the project in terms of government's contribution. So once we complete, um, Mount Granby Community Center, we're going to move on to another one. We don't want to start all of them at the same time and then end up not finishing none of them. So we're going to do them one by one. Um, as it relates to the, the road office being, um, moved, the road office was moved because of the dilapidated structure that we have, the old Public Works, um, building. Um, engaging with this Chief Technical Officer, the CTO in Infrastructure sometime last week with Minister for MIT. They have confirmed that some technical, um, engineers, some engineers came and they did some assessment recent on the building. But you'd appreciate that all of the offices that our government, um, own are in rented property. So for example, the Office of the Parliamentary Representative, the Office of the Parliamentary Elections Office the persons would go to register, the Social Development Office, all of these offices are rented to private persons. The issue with when we had to move the road office from the park is that, um, and we moved them because we have a national sports council and we have a parish sports council and they're using that office now as they rightfully have the rights to do so. The issue was that we couldn't find a suitable place, um, a rented property that could house the, the road office because we know we have some gears and we have other little, um, like road, road stickers and stuff that we use for when we have small, um, infrastructure projects. So we didn't find any place that we could have used to, um, house them here. So we had to bring them down to the, to the road office in Bouchesu. But we implore and we, we are working very closely with the Ministry of Infrastructure that as, as part of ensuring that we have sustainability and we lessen our costs as a government, we can continue to rent, rent, rent all over Grenada like that. We have to ensure that our dilapidated and abandoned buildings are well fixed and well able to house all of our offices. So until we fix that bigger problem and until we get somewhere suitable for them in St. John, they would have to be housed there. And finally, for the broader bridge, um, there have been a back and forth with, um, in terms of the, the contractor, with the, the engineers, as well as the consultant to the project and what was the scope of work and what was not the scope of work. I won't go into that much details, but we have gone past that hurdle. And so we have, um, given temporary access. So the bridge is open now for temporary access still. We are hoping that the, the project would be completed by end of June this year. So finally, the project is going to be completed and we're going to have an official launch when that is happened. Until then, we have given, um, temporary access because we understand it is so tedious and hectic for students having to make that added fifteen-minute drive to go to shape our school. So we've given them temporary access and we're hoping that by end of June we should be able to fully complete the project and have a, a successful opening.
Thank you, Minister. We have another question on the floor.
Good evening to each and everyone that is assembly here. Protocol has been established already. And, and one thing that I want to say, I would love to say. I mean, if no one has said that and haven't said anything like that to you guys, the panel on the podium is doing a beautiful job. I pray for you guys all the time. It's not easy doing what you guys are doing. And as most people know, I mean, I'm Grenadian, not only Grenadian. I was born, I'm a Belmont woman, let's put it that way. But I left Grenada in nineteen sixty-nine, right? And I always came back and like Grenada was stagnant. I mean, it's like stagnant, you have water and bugs are just, everything is just hanging around it. But from what I can see with this government, I cannot desire. I don't know how to start, where to start. And you guys are lucky you have a firm, firm, firm man. Mr. Deacon, my boy, my son, my everything. I mean, they are doing it. They are working. Um, many, many years, you know, we've been complaining about the roads in Chublu. I mean, it has been bad for so long. I remember when it rained, it pours. Sometime I had to take people from point A to point B because of the water. Now I see the government has done a good job. I mean, and I want to thank you guys. I want to thank the Minister of the South. I want to thank each and everyone that is there. But Mr. Mr. Minister, something that I have to say. I know it caused the government a lot of money, but the, the job that it has done is not finished. Because the same thing I'm seeing, the water is coming from one side to another side. And we got to do better than that. And thank you guys. I keep you guys in praise. Have a good night. God bless each and every one.
Thank you.
Good night. Protocol already established. I want to direct that, um, question to, um, Minister Claudette Joseph. Um, as you can see the Caronage, the whole place is falling apart. When you would take on that task of bringing the Caronage where it's supposed to be in a better condition? The next thing I want to ask, the, the building that was the courthouse long ago, what it is you is going to use that to do? Right? That's my question.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you for the question. I'll answer the, um, second question first. The building that you used to house the, sorry, my tongue tied up. The building that used to house the courthouse, that's York House. It's part of the, the redevelopment of the whole area that I spoke about when I did the presentation just now. So the vision and, um, we are in discussion right now with the Ministry of Tourism and Creative Affairs as well as some experts from outside, people who are experienced in restoring heritage sites. Um, the vision is to develop that whole area, starting with York House on the Church Street and down to the museum, the Drill Yard and the old library. Our initial intention was to restore, repair and reopen the library in its current location. But more and more, we are being, we are being advised that it may not be the best location to reestablish the library. So, um, for example, one of the considerations now is to repl, um, restore the library at the old court building at York House. And so, um, hearing a few applause, I guess it's not a bad idea. Yeah, so, so that's, that's, yeah, it's just one of the, that's one of the things that, um, is rec, one of the ideas that we have, um, recommended to us. So that's the short answer to the question. York House is part of the greater redevelopment of the town of St. George and particularly that area encompassing Church Street and down to Young Street and Mokton Street. Um, what was the other question?
The Caronage.
Oh, the Caronage, yes. Sorry, I'm a bit tired. Yeah. Um, the Caronage, we have the Climate Smart Cities Project and the Caronage is one of those areas and the main area in the town that has been identified, um, for that project. And there is already secured funding under the Saudi Development Fund for the greater development of the Caronage. But I can tell you in the interim, there are some very vulnerable spots on the Caronage where the sea is actually undermining the road. So only last week, or was it on Tuesday? I had a meeting, a group of us colleagues and the technical people from the Ministry of, um, Infrastructure Development. And that was one of the matters we discussed. So some remedial temporary work is going to start on the Caronage soon. But under the Climate Smart Cities, um, project, the Caronage is earmarked for major development. So we are getting to the Caronage.
Thank you, Senator, for your response. We do have a question from online. Um, and this one is for Minister Karyn James. Um, I know you listed a, um, a list of roads which are scheduled for repair. But the question is regarding the broken Mount Villa, Mount Door Road, when can we look forward to the road being repaired or, and reopened?
Yes, so, um, Mondo Road as well too is another one of the neglected roads, um, within the constituency. Although it falls, um, Mondo falls in, um, St. John via the geographic boundary, the constituency boundary is different to that of the geographic boundary. So, um, we have not been able to, um, work on that as fast as we would have liked because of that. But I'm following our conversations and our engagement with infrastructure and MIT last week. And as I promised the people, the residents of Mondo there, um, because for me, it's not about who vote for me and who is eligible to vote in, in, in the constituency. But I think the parish needs, you know, a total improvement. And that road is, is critical for the farmers and residents as well. So they have given me a commitment, as I've given the people, the residents of my commitment in February, that we are going to try our best, um, to secure the funding to rehabilitate the road there. So that is one of the road, the major roads that is down, um, as a major infrastructure project for us that we're going to try to tackle before the rainy season comes on us. So that one is down to do. We just are waiting now Ministry of Infrastructure to, um, get on board to giving us the technical scopes and the likes.
Thank you for, thank you for your response, Minister. I don't see any, any hands left, just one, two. So we'll take two more and we'll wrap up with, um, Minister and Act, Acting Prime Minister. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I want to, um, bring something to the attention of the Acting PM. Brother Andy, um, there is a old updated building on Melvin Street. As you live the health center, I think that's the old Pan House, the police station. Take a look at that building. Very soon I think that will collapse on somebody. I think you need to throw it down, do something to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. Okay, um, Senator Joseph. Senator Joseph, um, the lady at the back that made, that made mention of the Caronage. I would just please, I'd like to ask you to look into St. George's Market Square. Uh, you hearing? Are you hearing? Okay, so to me, St. George's Market Square needs attention. There's too much loitering. In there, there's, there's some, there's some, um, stalls that are not occupied by, um, there's some stalls that are not occupied by vendors. And, um, you can see all kind of things happening in St. George's Market Square. I'll leave the rest there. Um, to, um, Honorable Delma Thomas, um, are there any plans for a halfway house for persons that are patients that are released from the mental institution and doesn't have a place? Because they, some of them are released and they, they don't have a place to go to because some of the patient, some of, some of the relatives are not comfortable taking them in. So these are my two questions.
All right, thank you. Um, just, just to remind, uh, the audience, let's, the, when somebody is on the floor, we have to give them respect. Let's listen to their contributions, please. Thank you. So, um, question, um, addressed Senator?
Yeah, um, I agree with you. The market square is quite a challenge and there's a lot to be done there. Um, it has been left over the years to disintegrate. And, um, we have a lot of ill-disciplined behavior, illicit activities. Um, and bearing in mind that the market is though located in the town, is, um, occupied by people from all over the country, people from all over the country have stalls. And so it has been a challenge. I have been working with the Ministry of Infrastructure to devise a plan that would revamp the whole market. And in fact, not just the market in the town of St. George, but markets in general. We have issues with the markets in general. So there's a lot to be done in, in regard to security, especially at night, um, allocation of, of the vending booths, um, ensuring that when the booths are rented, they are actually used by the person because we have a lot of demand for booths while some people who have booths have them locked up and are not using it. So yes, a holistic plan is needed for the improvement of the markets across Grenada, including the one in town. And of course, as we are in the process of devising a plan, revamping the rules because the, the regulations relating to the market is, is over sixty years old, right? The fees, everything. So it also has to do with revamping the, the laws and the regulations relating to the rental of space at the market and use of that space. Um, so that's where we are with it. And of course, as we are at the stage where we are still considering how best to treat with the market, your suggestions are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Um, Minister Thomas?
So the issue of providing halfway home or keeping patients who are released at Monge is something that is coming up very regularly. So it's twofold. As a government, we will want to be able to provide support to families who believe they honestly cannot keep their families because of, um, abuse and all, all these kind of issues when you are mentally challenged. But also we want to be able to provide the education and the support to families because mental health or mental issues, they are not permanent. Once you are treated and once you are able to get your medication at home and families are there with you, providing you with your support, you can be reintegrated within your household, within your communities and have a regular life as any ordinary person. So the education must be done. But we appreciate that there are some persons who are mentally challenged who really cause issues in communities. And so as a government, we will look at ways and means in which we can assist in that regard.
Thank you, Minister. We have one final question from the floor. I noticed there was a lady who wanted to ask a question as well. Um, so we'll, we'll save the best for last. We'll leave you for last. So we'll take the gentleman and then you have your question next.
Good night, good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Welcome to the head, with the head table. Give me good people that should be here this afternoon to attend this meeting. And first, I want to thank all the ministers for the great work you have done. And secondly, secondly, I want, secondly...
Please, please use the mic. Thanks.
Hello?
Yes, you can speak closer to the mic and the sound will come through.
Yeah, I say good night to the head table and everyone that here saying a pleasant good night. Now, the first thing I want to speak about now, I want to congratulate the lead Prime Minister in St. John's. First, the lights. Now, I have been a hard time, people condemn in the lights, but how you think I come to calm them down? Because the light... Because the light, I'm bugging a lot of thief from traveling the night. Because one of the guys confront me and I say, yes, you must condemn the light. Because if Christ is the light of the world and this government put in light, passing the bush now when a thief people animals. So all the farmers glad now that the lights are in there because they had to pass you bullshit people go to ship. So a result of that, the farmers feeling quiet now because they are losing plenty animals again. Secondly, now, St. John's, I live in St. John's all the years. And I have been a problem with the road system here. And I say that just to say, we have no bypass road in St. John's to lead to town. I remember a couple of years ago when Mondo break, we had to travel all around Granville to get to Long Day. I went and talked to the minister a couple of years ago and this question now going to the Ministry of Works. This question going to the Ministry of Works. Now, Mondo Road is a very easy road to fix. This was an immigrant had built when we didn't have equipment. I is a machine operator. And what I noticed, Mondo Road is not a hard road to fix, Mr. Communication Works. Just to ease up the tension of St. John's, St. Marcus and Patrick people, the road in Mondo could do. You just have to get some positive men who know about the road. And we could do the work. I have experience and what I want to advise the ministers in this meeting, there is a lot of Grenadians who operating machine and who know about machine retire. And they make up their mind to give service to the young guys and them, to learn to operate the equipment. So that when we have this kind of problem, we don't want to always going to St. George's or run it somewhere, call somebody right in the area and clear the road so that the officers could pass, everybody could pass. And the reason why I say that, Mister, if we have a problem here, you could call all the police immediately. You could call the doctors immediately. But it does never happen because you could call the government workers to go and work track and things like that. So we need that. So Mister Communication Works, that question is for you. See what you could do for us, please, in St. John's. We need a road, we need a road to go in St. John's in case if Mondo Road break again or any other road break, we have a bypass. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And we have final question on the floor.
Good night, everyone. Good night, my dear representative Ms. James. I stand here to concern about this Marbella Road. I heard you spoke about getting it done. But I think it's a waste of time spending obstacle on the ground there. Because the road had been deteriorated for a few years. When I work in road office sixteen and a half years, my old engineer and road officer, Mister Reginald St. Paul, they had some men from St. George's from Communication Works, Mister Ari Phillip and Mister Campbell as engineers. They kept foreign engineers and watched that road there. And Mister St. Paul, what today was, don't cut the bamboo at the bottom by the sea because there is a water coming from pleasant stream on the ground and it takes there. They did not listen to him. So from the time they cut this bamboo there, we have a lot of problem in that road in Marbella. So you can spend whatsoever you want, it won't stand up. My idea, if you want to do a road, you can get some lumber maybe from Guyana and put a fly over board road still. But months ago last year, I was on the western side going across the tunnel when you're going to St. George's, that road in Manasbit. There is a short road going across over Palmas. And I always look at that road. I went in there once to get something done. I was chatting to a guy about that road. And I said to Marbella, and it's a dangerous road there because remember all the hills there, the road has come down. There was dead already and we trying to save our own people and even foreigners. So I said to the guy, the ministers and I should come out and look at that road that could fall right over in perseverance down there because they had the road set already. I know it will cost money, but if they throw it out foreign, many people will be able to support because the western road is very dangerous, especially when rain. When you driving under the hill of the Palmas, you see scrubs running down, big stone falling down. So my idea is, I said I would try to see my minister personnel or Mister Andy and chat it over, throw it out. They can look at that area there and put it in practice and then they can see what they can do. So I just know if my idea is right because I have the experience with Mister St. Paul. And I see they doing some road work now. When there is poor toll there, they just say that a woman chose something and they shot the rig and the time tomorrow when the vehicle pass all run out again, losing lots of government money for no reason. Whenever they have a road to stick up, you'll see they'll just clean haircut it like that, make a good area with the pickaxe, strip out the inside, sprinkle the ground, put in some rough stone because there is no macadam now. So when they put it in, you put it obstacle on it, sprinkle the water, put the sand and there was a, there's a problem down when they didn't have the machine. Then we had the road lasted for a few months, for months of them on the same area they doing. And it's just a waste of time.
Definitely.
There is people who uses to do this road, they at home now, but they have ideas. They can get them out to give the young people ideas what to do on the road. Others will just be in chopping mode. That's my thing.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and your suggestions to the Ministry of Infrastructure and your minister. And we want to close this evening. We want to invite our Acting Prime Minister, Honorable Andy Williams, to close. But before he closes, there's one question from online regarding the Aquatic Center. The question is, can we... Despite the imminent construction of the Aquatic Center, can we see same to reexamine a better location since the stadium area is prone to flooding? So that question is from an online viewer. So Minister, if you care to respond.
So we already had a design that contemplate the flooding at the National Stadium. So I believe that we are well set. If there are issues, then the Ministry of Infrastructure can guide us accordingly. But as it stands right now, we are set waiting for to break the ground, maybe sometime in June as it relates to the Aquatic Center.
All right. Thank you, Minister. And now we welcome the Acting Prime Minister, Honorable Andy Williams, to close.
South side, no, sorry. West side, no, south side, right? Good night to everyone. And let me just start by bringing greetings from our beloved Prime Minister, Honorable Deacon Mitchell. And let me just say as we bring tonight's national town hall meeting to a close, I want to take a moment to express my deepest appreciation to all of you. Whether you joined us here in person, tuned in virtually or contributed your thoughts and questions throughout. Your participation is what makes these town halls meaningful and impactful. Tonight, we have had honest conversations. We have heard your concerns, your ideas and your hopes for the future. And I want to assure you that your government is listening. We are not just listening, but we are doing our best every single day to make meaningful progress in your lives and in your communities. In just under three years, we have undertaken the enormous task of fixing what has been left undone for nearly 25 years. That is no small feat. We inherited challenges that ran deep, challenges that required more than just quick fixes, like the marketing board, been broken for years. And no one had the guts to fix it. Because politically, you know, it could be bad because you may have to lay off some people, restructure it and so. But you can accept our willingness to make the hard decisions, not just to gain political points, but to move our country forward. Folks, we have seen this government coming into office. It was said that if pension was paid, the economy will collapse. We paid the pension and the economy is stronger than how we met it. Folks, as Senator Joseph was saying, the minimum wage is supposed to be revised every three years. We have seen for approximately 10 years or more, nothing was done to restructure or to change the minimum wage. As a matter of fact, you had a government was telling, who was in office before, was telling workers who was making seven and eight hundred dollars a month to do not accept or to fight against the minimum wage of 1,200 dollars a month that we wanted to implement. Because if they took it, employers will get rid of them because they cannot afford to pay. Guess what? We made the bold step of increasing the minimum wage. And today, I can tell you, unemployment is lower than when we came into office. We inherited the Kiwanabe saga, where someone said, no white man can tell him what to do. And we had, in my constituency, a building that was just there standing nothing. And we again have tackled that and have made progress so that works may continue shortly. The UKCF project, where over 80 million EC dollars was given to us in a grant in 2016. When Dave Cameron came in 2015 and he saw Grenada, he gave us a grant of 80 million dollars. 10 million was for the Western Millwood project and 70 million was for the southern water expansion project. Guess what? 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, nothing was done. We lost the funds. It took our Prime Minister to go back and speak to the UK and we got back 70 million dollars. This project, this southern water expansion project is expected to start at the ending of this month by Nawasa. The Fort George project, I remember previous Minister Derby was in the meeting because Prime Minister, we are at the verge of losing that funds again. And Prime Minister asked MIT to intervene. And when I call the meeting, I call the meeting with Flo, Digicel, the RGPF, Ministry of Tourism, everyone who were the top and so on the vote. And it was said, the reason why that project could not or did not start is because it was impossible. Right now, we are speaking about the ending of the project. That project should be completed in June to September of this year. We talking about again the Build Back Better houses. Folks, sometimes we take these things for granted. But you had a hurricane that destroyed Karaku and PD Martinique. It destroyed the northern part of our islands. And this is the first time our citizens have been given houses. You do you know how much a Build Back Better house cost? Approximately $100,000. So every house that is built, we are putting $100,000 of capital investment into the hands of our people. We are providing employment. We are providing employment for our people. You have builders, painters, electrician, plumbers, four set of contractors being employed on one project. Again, with the police headquarters building on the Carinage, what a lovely building. And that building was tied to the Fort George project because we had to move the police headquarters from the Fort George in order to bring the real restoration. And we went just last week, Senator Joseph and I went up to Fort George. And I can tell you, the next October 19th and 25th, you will get an opportunity to go up to Fort George. And you will see, this would be one of the most beautiful tourist attraction that we will have in Grenada, Karaku and PD Martinique. You will see it. Let's go again. Unemployment. I asked the Minister for Economic Development to give me the figures on unemployment. Because right now, we cannot get workers. We cannot get workers and it's a fact. And I can tell you, the last study that was done said that employment was approximately 12.5%. And if I'm a betting man, I could bet that unemployment is below 10% today. And this is what this government, your government, are doing. They said that we are children, but maybe you should get more children to be part of government because we are doing an excellent job and we are not blowing our horns. So yes, we have done a lot. But we are the first to acknowledge that there is still more to do. The road to real transformation is long. It requires patience, persistence and partnership. We are not here to make excuses. We are here to make progress. And to do so in the full view of the people we serve. So tonight, we, my colleagues, ask you for your continued support, your continued engagement and your continued belief in what we are building together. Change doesn't happen overnight. But step by step, decision by decision, we are moving Grenada forward. On behalf of the government, we want to say thank you for your trust, thank you for your voice and thank you for being part of our journey. We are just getting started. And together, all of us will finish strong. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Minister Williams, for your final comments. At this time, I invite all of you to join us on the outside. We have some light refreshments. And I want to take this opportunity to wish you a pleasant evening and a safe journey home. Thank you.